Check one, two. We are back from the closed session. Ms. Anderson?
So, no reportable action was taken. Council considered the item and will be potentially acting on it in open session.
Thank you very much. That will conclude the closed session. And we start the open session. Welcome. How silly is that? Okay, here we go. Alrighty. Roll call, please. Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Montgomery, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Welcome, community. Please rise as you are able. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And may I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now we will move to public communications. And first, we'll start with our commission reports. And we have Mr. West here, correct?
Hello. Thank you. And welcome. It's my first meeting this year to Councilmember Mang and Mayor Gilman. So nice to see you guys. And you guys.
You too.
Remember me.
Absolutely.
Tonight, very exciting to be able to present to you our recommendations for this year's arts grants. We spent between the Ad Hoc Committee, the Arts Commission, and staff. We've spent over 150 hours on the process this year. And I want to do a special thanks to manager Ben and to James Renger for all the time they put in and the guidance that they gave us this year, too. It was a much smoother process. So, please consider our recommendations with the sincerity that we present them. On the bad news, I may have mentioned that I had applied for, we had applied for a arts grant from the state, which we did not get. And that was going to be for doing an assessment of the arts, of the state of the arts, the arts economy, the creative economy in the Ojai Valley. The county's currently doing one broadly. And I really would encourage us to consider that that might be something we want to do ourselves. When we talk about the biggest employers in the Valley, you always hear them mention the in and the schools or the hospital. But my guess is that if you did an assessment far surpassing those even together would be the artists and the creatives in our community. And they make an economic impact, not only in our community, but throughout the world. Think about how the people live here and make an impact in Hollywood or public art in China. Or, I mean, it's amazing that we have such a small amount in arts grants for what may be the most important part of our economy. So, please consider taking a closer look at that this year. And tonight, two commissioners are going to be present. Commissioner Steiner and Commissioner Wright, who was the chair of the Ad Hoc Committee that did this election, and our recommendations to you guys. So, thank you, and we look forward to a hearty year.
Thank you so much for being here. And for the other commissioners being here as well. Any other commissioner reports that are here? Okay, great. We will move on to public communications. Ron Solarsano, William Wirick, and Larry Steingold. Hi, Ron.
Alrighty. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solarsano, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. Here today to just give you a quick update on some of what we have going on at the Ojai Library. So, I want to start first for kids and families. We're going to be hosting a Pokemon Day at the library on Sunday, February 23rd. This is actually the second Pokemon Day we've hosted. The last one was a little while ago, and it was a great success. So, stop by from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. to take part in fun activities, including button making, pearler bead crafting, and a scavenger hunt. So, we hope to see you all there. The following week, on Saturday, March 1st, playwright and theater director Bob Mayberry, who is a professor emeritus from CSU Channel Islands, is going to come to the library to expand on the Shakespeare authorship question, examining the case for and against a half dozen alternate writers who have been thought to have written Shakespeare's famous plays over the last few hundred years. Then, on Monday, March 3rd, our next Monday matinee film screening is going to take place featuring John Chu's adaptation of Wicked, starring Ariana Grande and Cynthia Erivo. Showtime is going to be at noon, and you'll also have a chance there to learn about some of the other award-winning movies we're going to be showing in the coming months for our Monday matinee series. Later, on Saturday, March 8th, the library is going to welcome career homicide prosecutor Richard Simon to speak about his two critically acclaimed fiction books in the courtroom drama and crime thriller genre, and how his vast experience in holding the worst criminals accountable has contributed to his storytelling and his writing. And then lastly, on Saturday, March 15th, we have certified master gardener Danny Brucius joining us at the Ojai Library to deliver a timely talk on firewise living from structure to landscape. This is a practical workshop that's going to equip homeowners with essential skills to reduce wildfire risks. Participants are going to learn strategies for creating defensible space around structures, including vegetation management, landscaping techniques, and home modification approaches to protect homes in wildfire-prone regions. So, we have so much more also happening at the Ojai Library, including one-on-one career coaching, adult literacy support, ukulele, poetry, and Shakespeare clubs, book club kits, electric leaf blowers, weekly storytimes, Lego play sessions, and more. And for more details on any of these programs, drop by our library or visit us online at Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Solarsano. Appreciate your work very much. William Wirick, Larry Steingold, and then Barry Cohen.
Evening, council. As we contemplate for a significant rainstorm of the year, I remembered that we, years ago, years ago, had a, I think it was almost $900,000 planning grant. That was completed, is in the archives, listing innumerable street improvement programs for stormwater capture, which of course is now the focus of yet another executive order, well timed, from the governor. Of course, Ojai being Ojai, we were years ahead of that, at least in terms of planning. However, I have to say, I was disappointed that no elements of that planning grant were incorporated into our last round of street improvement program. The stormwater capture designs were laid out in great detail, including particular measures for curb extensions and traffic calming, as well as particular ways of maybe handling stormwater infiltration in our flood control channels. We have one of the densest, well, we have in the city of Ojai, the densest braiding of natural watercourses in the whole Ojai Valley. I always contend that I believe that's why the city of Ojai is located where it is. And yet, here we have a planning grant that was accepted. We had, I thought, we had adopted a maximum stormwater recharge program, especially for the perched aquifer, which is the main contributor to stream flow in San Antonio Creek, which is important in terms of our negotiations with the settlement on the channel keeper suit. And yet, I did not see, I'm not aware that staff has provided you information about this planning grant and its completion, and it's an extensive, long document. And I would ask you to please maybe make some inquiries as to staff as why that was not included in the latest round of street improvement program, and hope that it is included in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I will certainly follow up on that. Larry Steingold, Barry Cohen, and Fran, and I'm not sure, is it Gaelic? Or I can't read the last name, but it's Fran. So, Larry Steingold.
Good evening, and hopefully we see rain tonight before we go home.
Yes.
The California Environment Quality Act, SEQA, was established in 1970 because of a, by Ronald Reagan, for the growing concern of environmental protection. That's why we have it. That's why all states have it. That's why we have EPA. That's why we have limits. We have limits on residential land. We have limits on industrial. We have limits on everything. Why? To keep us safe. Why do we have inspections of homes? To ensure there isn't asbestos or friable asbestos, or lead paint, or exceedingly high levels of pesticides. We have inspections. We have physical inspections. We don't have a hypothesis. We don't have an educated guess. We don't surmise. We don't suggest. We don't have similar assumptions. You want to ensure something, test for it. There are no guarantees. But if you make a test, at least that part of the issue goes away and makes us sleep better at night. We cannot hang our hat on laws that were promulgated, I think that's the word, by other legislatures to game the system and allow for workarounds to make things happen. I understand people don't want affordable housing. I understand we don't want this, we don't want that. I get that. Okay? But to revise science, or to take away science to make things happen, is obscene. Okay? I mean, I know we just had the big thing with the virus and the science and this and that. But if you have standards that have been established nationally for residential land and industrial land and commercial, for everything, why not just look at those standards and say, hey, does that land meet those, exceed those standards? And quite honestly, without testing, and 120 years of usage, of unknown usage, is absurd. They want to test for one pile of dirt. Right? I think that's wonderful. Hopefully, it's clean. But did anybody looked at the dirt last year, five years ago, 20 years ago, 50 years ago, 75 years ago, 120 years ago? These are their things, not mine. All right? I just think we need to do something to at least make us morally feel good, or actually do the right thing. Okay? Because ignoring it and letting, they, look, the city government has tools to let them do these things. That's fine. But we shouldn't do them just because we can't. It's not right to the people who live there. Okay? Or who are living anywhere, for that matter. If you're going to move on a piece of dirt, you should have it be clean, or at least approved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Barry Cohen, Fran, and Anita Cram.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Barry Cohen, and I'm the founder of Miners Oaks Community Garden. And I wanted to come and tell you guys a little bit about our project. With spring coming up, it's the perfect time to amp up in the garden. The garden is a quarter of an acre and started out as an empty piece of land that we're built into a budding community garden. So, there's 38 raised beds that people can rent out. Eight are higher off the ground for people with mobility opt, with mobility issues, and six are reserved for scholarship opportunities that members of the community have already offered to support. We're going to have lots of workshops and events, especially in March and April. We're planning on having a workshop every Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 on things, including seed swapping and intro to gardening, and also arts and crafts that are nature-related. Fun for kids and adults, and everyone is welcome, not just members. Membership is $120 for a six-month lease, and that includes bed, soil, water, tools. And we still have lots of beds available. So, we'd love to get those filled for March and get people in the garden this spring. If you want to inquire more, our website is minersoakscommunitiegarden.com, or you can see us on Instagram at minersoakscommunitiegarden. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Appreciate it. Fran, Anita Cram, and Dale Hanson. Sorry, I wasn't getting your last name correctly. What is, tell me your last name?
Gieler.
Say that one more time?
Gieler.
Gieler, thank you.
I know, my writing is horrible.
No, no, no. I just didn't see that that was an L. Gieler. Thank you very much.
Okay. Here we go. I just, I had to write it down because I knew I would forget. I just want to remind the city of the construction happening on the pathway between the Mallory Way cabins and the cottages, where the creek used to be. It's not there anymore as of today. Every day is different from there, but there usually are a few violations, violations happening at the site, including construction around unprotected oaks, and there always is exposed rebar. I would like to express how incredibly sad that an invasive and outdated plan from 2007 was allowed to be put into action in regards to the waterway between the Mallory cabins and Alyssa Street. It's so environmentally disrespectful to the land and to the people living alongside it. I ask that you continue to turn your attention to what is happening there in hopes of preventing it from happening elsewhere. And please, keep your eyes on whatever the plans are for the Mallory Way cabins, because what he's doing down there, who knows what he would do to the cabins? Change is inevitable, as we know, but it doesn't have to be as it is happening at the cottages right now. When you walk through there, it's like unrecognizable. A friend of mine who grew up there, around the corner, played there like years ago. She just looked at it today and was just, she could not believe it, that it was just, it's like, it's like mass destruction. So, please don't forget us. Please don't forget the cottages, and please just keep an eye on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gieler. Anita Cram, Dale Hanson, and then Lori Sigmund.
Good evening.
Hello.
And thank you, everyone. And of course, I'm piggybacking on what Fran just spoke about. This is having a tremendous impact on the local neighborhood. It's really loud. I mean, I mean really, really loud, when they bring in the shovels that are digging in the creek bed, and they're sifting rocks, and people's tempers are short and nervous systems are shot. Start times are being blown. There was one day, they started before dawn. And end times, they ended a little bit late tonight, even though it wasn't much. I'm currently the wicked witch of the West, which I hold that proudly. I was born in Kansas. So, with them, I'm proud to be the wicked witch of the West. Okay, so SEQA. Lori gave a nice intro to it. Negative mitigated declaration from 2000, 2008, which was so strongly fought to bring forward by the developers, they're not following it. Trees, they just got tree protection today. It's gone 30 days without protecting the trees, and they only did that because they were sensing so much anger within the community that they got really nervous, that they were becoming vulnerable. Are there any consequences for those 30 days? It's been documented. People have seen it. We all have pictures. Cultural resources, same SEQA documented, recommended Tumash monitor for any excavation, any tree removal, any trenching, has not been done. Hammerhead turnaround that all of this creek work was done for. We are being told by the workers, by the foremen of the project, that they're going to concrete all of that. Again, SEQA says that they fought so hard for. The SEQA mitigation says low-impact materials, granite, or no, it says gravel or crushed granite, you know? And that isn't this phase, that part of it. But you know, they're just going to do it, and then it's too late, which is sort of like there, is this, it's better to get forgiveness than permission seems to be the modus operandi for the project. So, I also would like, you know, the city to really see if they can't, because they're going to be doing many more projects. And if they get in a pattern of just, you know, breaking ordinances, breaking SEQA agreements, it's going to occur much more, and we're going to be losing a lot more trees as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cram. Dale Hanson, Lori Sigmund, and Star Child.
Hello, I'm Dale Hanson. I live in the city of Ojai.
Hello.
I always start with that. I just want to add one thing to what she was just saying, is that they're putting a concrete channel there, not allowing the water, the stream, to go into the ground, which is what we need. That's not what I came here to talk about. What I came here to talk about, which I may be out of line, and if I am, forgive me, but the closed sessions that's going on with the indemnification, it's been almost two years, I think, and no, no decision has been reached. Isn't it time that it comes out here so we can all hear what's going on? I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong for requesting that, but I think that it's something that we might all be ready for, and I appreciate your considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Lori Sigmund, Star Child, and John Drucker.
Good evening.
Hello.
Last week, when we were in this room, topic of discussion was the cost plan and operating expenses for one year for the cabin village at the public worksite. And I want to remind the city council or suggest to you that when the city manager mentioned in discussion that, I believe he said, $8 to $9 million in project development is, has already been committed to dignity moves, or that's the plan. And I realize about a week from now, we're going to have the Planning Commission meeting, and I really, I'm looking forward to, and I hope you are too, seeing a very detailed breakdown of that $8 to $9 million. Because something our city manager said at, I think it was probably six or eight months ago, he said, with, with being quite assured about it, that he said, I will guarantee you it will not cost more than $1.7 million to develop the public works yard compared to one of the most expensive properties that was be, also being considered. So, I think we need to, we need to really take a look at that and be mindful of that. So, another issue I'd like to bring up, because I've been to a couple city council meetings already. I watch them, you know, sometimes afterwards if I can't attend. And I, I don't know if it's required, or if it, if it is required, if we can start enforcing it, that when people get up here and speak, that they identify themselves by their first name, their last name, and if they're not comfortable mentioning what their address is, maybe mention what street they live on, or what district within the city of Ojai that they live in. Or simply, if they live outside the city limits, then state that. Because, I'm just saying. So, I don't know if you can answer me that question right now, if that's a requirement, or if we can start to require that.
Ms. Hanson, yeah, please.
I'm happy to answer. So, the First Amendment actually prevents us from asking those questions.
Okay.
Folks, if they want to come up and identify themselves as Mickey Mouse from Toontown, they could do that. So, yeah, the Brown Act and the First Amendment prevent us from doing that. People have to provide that information voluntarily.
Okay. All right. It would be helpful for me, and I'm sure maybe for all of you sitting up here, too. But if that's, that's the law, I guess that's the law. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Star Child, and then John Drucker.
Good evening.
Hello.
I agree with what Dale said. I'm Star Child. I live in Leslie Rule's district. Did you read the paper this week? I'm usually, I usually tease Kimberly a little bit about the titles that she uses. Sometimes they're a bit bombastic. Today, this last week, though, she said civil war. And I think that's an accurate description. Over $300,000 in legal expenses that somebody's going to pay for. Does it have to be Leslie Rule? If it does, I can only imagine how much of a burden that would be. Or is it going to be the city? Is it going to be more than $300,000? Or else, is it going to be the three neighbors who have leans in their houses? These are big, important issues, I think, and it's time to end this strife. I read in the paper what Leslie's lawyer said, and I don't think that Andy Whitman should have to accuse himself. I read what Andy Whitman wrote in the paper, and I've got questions. I don't know what the whole truth is, but I do know some things that I want to say. I do know that if my council member, Leslie Rule, is not in the room, and I'm not fully represented, I do know that I want transparency. I do know I'm proud of my council member, Leslie Rule, for seeing something she thought was wrong and for doing what she thought was right. I read some other things, and I don't, I want to tell you more. I don't think that cussing's respectful. I don't think it's civil, and I don't think it's very Ojai. And I want to know what happened. I want to read the two legal opinions that are supposedly baseless, according to council member Whitman. I don't want to take his word for it. I want to see him. I think it's time to end this war. I think it's time to start recording closed session meetings so that they can become public at appropriate time. I want this council to waive privilege on whatever closed session meetings it can so that the truth can come to light and so that we can come to reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. John Drucker.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm John Drucker, counsel to Leslie Rule and a local resident. First, I want to give a belated congratulations to you, Kim, and you, Andy.
Thank you.
For being here. But the events of the last few weeks have both angered and saddened me. That is because the city council is accepting grossly incompetent legal advice, both from outside the council and from your city attorney. And the city is paying, without any review whatsoever, outrageously high fees for this incompetent and at best minimal legal work. I understand that the city has already paid the Myers-Neve Law Firm some $117,000 for a 10-page PowerPoint presentation. 10 pages. A presentation addressed only one of two sentences of a statute they incorrectly thought was relevant. And last Wednesday, through me, Leslie Rule, wrote to you, telling you not to bother sending her a settlement offer along the lines that had been discussed. Nonetheless, Myers-Neve then took a week to do precisely what we had told them not to do. What are they going to charge the city for that? $20,000? $40,000? After all, it was longer than the PowerPoint presentation. Maybe it'll charge another $117,000, and you'll write the check. At the same time, it pays these outrageous sums for minimal and incompetent legal work without raising an eyebrow, the city seems to object to Leslie Rule's lawyers' bill for $400,000 for litigating an entire case, even through most of the appeal. Just wait until you have to pay not only that $400,000, but also pay for the city's defense of new litigation for indemnification, as well as her attorney's fees in that new case. And God help you if someone wants to sue ex-mayor Betsy Sticks and her friend Sabrina Venskis and others on this council for their fraud on the city and efforts to deny Leslie Rule her legal rights. Because that is exactly where your unquestioning acceptance of an overpayment for bad legal advice leads. I would love to stop this madness. But every reasoned and reasonable statement to this council seems to fall on deaf ears. And the solution is not another closed session to discuss it.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker. That's all the cards I have. Mr. Montgomery, anybody online?
Mayor, we have one raised hand. And speaking to our Zoom participants now, we are taking general public comment. First raised hand we have is Teal. Teal, you, pardon me, mayor, I just, speaking to James in the back, could you please give me permissions here on Zoom to unmute our participants? Standby. One moment.
Always.
All right. Teal, you have the ability to unmute, and you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate it. With this public comment, I'm calling for the public of Ojai, which you all represent. And I ask the public that you stand. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please continue.
I ask that the council stand for the public. I ask that the council stand for the public that you represent in your districts. I'm in Ventura County. And as for transparency, please remember the May 22nd, 2023 Ojai City Council Special Meeting with the Adjunct Professor of Ethics, Responsibility, and Campaign Finance of UC, at UC Berkeley Law School, Ann Ravel. And I also ask that the public, please, if you want to know what this is about rather than the spin, please watch the January 24th, 2023 Ojai City Council Regular Meeting. It's on video on YouTube. And there's a lot of other things as well, like February 4th, the last meeting in public comments on the Zoom session with the attorneys and the spin. And I ask that the people and the people representing the people who are you to please stand in your truth and stand up to this. And please don't waste the taxpayer money of Ojai, which I am not one. But it really is an interesting spin, and it's been for two years. And I echo Dale Hanson. Please, stand in your truth. And thank you for so much of your time.
Thank you. I have one more card. Alan Greenberg. I know you just, you came right on time. No waiting.
And I'll say, mayor, we have no more raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montgomery.
Counsel.
Hello.
I'm here because I'm concerned about two issues, which I'll mention. Because it is more timely, first is the item on this evening's consent calendar.
We're going to, we're going to talk about that in just a minute. Hang out just for one second, but is this something, do you want to talk about something that's not on the consent calendar also?
Yes.
Do that one now, and then we'll have you come, I'll have you handy for the consent, which we'll get to in a moment.
Oh, thank you.
No problem, but bring up the other issue.
The other issue is about the ordinance that was brought up last meeting and was rejected on a vote of three to two, as you know. I went to the city website as I wanted to see the video of the meeting, because I recalled that after that vote was taken, there was another vote taken about having various town hall meetings, or perhaps you might call it a forum, an open forum to discuss the ordinance so that everybody would have a chance to sort of interact, ask questions, give your opinions, get some answers. But there was no video, and I don't know why there was not. So, I'm, I'm thinking my recollection is correct, that there is going to be some sort of a public forum, maybe one or two, or even more meetings. And I haven't heard of any such meetings being announced. But I hope I'm correct, and I assume that there will be some more information about this soon enough. So, I hope that's the case, and thank you for that.
There will be more coming, certainly. I'm looking, I am seeing the one video right now on the website.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
From the clerk seat here.
Yep.
We have a couple options for video archives. One of them right now, we're having a little trouble uploading our giant data file. But we can, if any of the public wishes to reach out to the clerk's office, we can guide you to our YouTube archive where, where that meeting, the January 28th meeting is, is available.
Because it was so darn long? Is that the problem? We need them to be shorter so they can upload better?
Every once in a while, there's.
Yes, okay. Point taken. Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. All right, we are ready to move on. We will move on to, before, we're going to go on to the consent calendar. But Mr. Alameda, you had something you wanted to announce first. Am I correct?
Correct, thank you, mayor.
Yes.
So on the consent calendar tonight, I just wanted to note that item 1D, which is a professional services agreement with Eli Bailey for the implementation of our new finance software system, there's simply a formatting error that the last page, the top margin, got a little large and cut off the end of the agreement. The only portion that's missing are the signatures on the agreement. But the city clerk, Mr. Montgomery, has updated this on our city website.
Okay.
So the agreement in its entirety is available on the city's website. So just wanted to note that in your packet, if you're wondering where the signature page went. Also, I, I did want to note, a recent transition in staff. We had someone that left us that did HR. And we were more than fortunate to bring on a very seasoned HR and risk management professional who's here with us tonight. I'd like to take a moment, if she could introduce herself.
Yes.
Kathy Holman, who has over a decade of experience with nearby city of Camarillo, has joined us as a CalPERS extra-help annuitant. And I mention that because recently, when the council redid their compensation, it allowed for us to bring in PERS retired annuants and extra-help annuitants. So we get people with a whole lot of experience come help us out in these areas.
I can't see her, she's too far away. She's way back in the room.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kathy Holman. So I'm happy to be here. I'm sorry, I kind of tuned out a little bit, Carl, when you were introducing me, so.
I was just saying how fortunate we are to have you. So Kathy comes from the city of Camarillo.
I came from the city of Cam, yep, I was there for 29 years, and I spent 25 of those years in HR and risk management. And the first five years were in finance, so I have a broad spectrum of experience. And I'm really looking forward to getting to know the team here. It's been a lot of fun so far. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Yay.
Welcome.
Yes, now, wonderful, great to have you here. Now, I do have one procedural question being new. So if I start off by saying, on the consent calendar, asking if anyone on the council would like to remove items, but we also have public comments on specific items. So would I do that first and then take the public comment on the specific items?
I would suggest taking the public comment, and if the council wants to pull
Okay.
one or more items, we could do that.
Happy, yep. I'll happily do that. So we're on to the consent calendar, and I will start off, and I'm going to go by their numbers in order, and that way alphabetically. So first on consent B, I have Star Child.
I'd like to talk about two items in the warrants. One is the legal bill from our city attorney's office, Colon Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley for $118,340 and $35. When I look at this bill, I also see another bill from Myers-Nave for $45,286 and 20 cents. That one says that it's for special counsel indemnification analysis, part of the legal strife and civil war that we were just talking about in public comments. I'd like to know if the item for Colon Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley could also parse out how much of that spending was for special counsel indemnification analysis. I'd like to know when we reach the amount of money we've spent on council trying to defend against this lawsuit, or defend against indemnification, once that money is more than the actual price of indemnification itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Okay, moving on, I have a, it's, this is on, hold on, let me show them, right? It says E and says no name. So is there somebody who wrote no name for consent item E, which is general plan update, climate action plan, but no name? Literally, they wrote no name? The words no name?
Mayor, I wrote no name.
Oh.
We did receive a, we received a card for consent item 1E.
Did someone omit writing their name, but means to speak? If you remember, come up. Okay, I have also on consent item E, or letter E, Bill Miley. Thank you.
Hello.
Not note that.
It's the general plan update.
Yep.
Continuing process. Slow but sure. With a focus on the climate action plan, the economic tourism diversification factors, which I'm really interested. I certainly support the creation and involvement of community folks into advisory groups to add values, information, observation, historical remembrances, and opinion to city general plan development. I think this is a very positive step towards better general plan relevancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. And also on E, Star Child?
Thank you. I was really happy to be selected for the Climate Action Committee. I, it's not something that I asked for. I saw the email in my inbox, and I actually thought it was either sent out to everybody, or maybe even a mistake. I put it, put it in the spam folder, or at least the, the red folder. Then I got another, well, then I saw my name here on the agenda, and I thought, well, gosh, maybe they're serious. And I got to thinking about it. And it's true that, you know, I do know some stuff about the climate, but I think some of my neighbors know a lot of stuff too. And I think perhaps a better way of forming these committees would be to advertise that we're having the committees and have people apply. And then maybe, you know, the best and the brightest could be on those committees instead of just whoever got an email. But i-if you decide to do it the way that it's done, I'm quite happy to serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Moving on to consent F, Bill Miley. Star Child, stay close. Mr. Miley, for F. Ah, perfect. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I may be confused. What's the subject of consent F?
It's essentially what we talked about in the closed session, that we will then approve in consent.
Habitat for Humanity?
Correct.
Aren't you going to discuss that today too?
Well, we, we discussed the agreement in the closed session, of which this, it's basically a reflection of what you see in F. And if the council approves the consent, then we will approve that.
Um, I have.
Mr. Whitman?
Specifically, it is. Never mind.
E, isn't it E? No, it's three.
You spoke on E already.
Yeah, I realize that.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, I have something to say about Habitat then.
Okay.
If I can find it.
Do you want to come back in a moment?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Stengel.
Thank you.
Yes.
Larry Stengel, I also appreciate getting an email. A community champion, one of the best and the brightest. Thank you, Star Child. But I, I, I do want to help the city and use whatever talents I have or experience to have, because I do live here and care enough to maintain the way I live and where I live. But I do think it should be open to the public and interviews, and because there are a lot of smart people out there who care. And whether it's for the environment, whatever side, whether it's intense climate action, or more rational, or, or different climate action, whatever you want to do, we have to do something, but, or general climate action, sorry. But economic development, but open it to the public. I'm sure there are more of the best and the brightest. I can't imagine how many. But I, I'll wear a T-shirt. But thank you, and, but put it out to the public, please.
Thank you very much. John Trent, and then we'll come back to Bill Miley. Hello, Mr. Trent.
How you guys doing?
Doing well.
Good. Welcome, Andy, welcome, Kim.
Yeah.
Good to see you guys.
You too.
First, I just wanted to say thank you to Leslie Rule, our council member, on her suggestion on May 4th regarding this item to have a, a public meeting or a community meeting. So I sincerely appreciate that. So I, I just wanted to represent one of my neighbors. She wasn't able to make it, so she wrote up a letter, and she just didn't get it here in time, so I'm going to read it for her. So she says, "My name is Robin Schwartzberg." So I'll try to do the best I can to sound like Robin. "I was born and raised in Ojai. I bought my home on Franklin Drive in 1997. My concern and reason for opposing five units at 408 410 North Montgomery Street is already complete, is the already complete lack of parking, and the dangers of visibility while pulling off a narrow street and impeding access on Franklin Drive, the cross-street of, to North Montgomery." She says, "I'm fully supportive of low-income housing. However, if you want to maintain for support for it, it needs to be done in a way that shows respect and the needs for the neighbors, or you'll quickly lose that support. It's also disrespectful to the people living there, especially if they're setting a separate standard to someone, someone who lives there as they're somehow less. One thing that has been very concerning is how impossible it is to see pulling out with all the cars from all the housing in the area, those who don't have adequate parking and are parked at the end of the street. And all the people speeding on their e-bikes and the likelihood of someone being killed are seriously high." She says, "If you just creep out, you have to say a prayer. The high-density condos replaced a single-family home across the street. There's a church, there's several businesses, overcrowded duplexes in all of Franklin, which doesn't allow parking because of its too, because it's too narrow. There isn't a day where we're not already have vehicles parked on Franklin illegally. There have been phases where she's had to knock on neighbors' doors daily just to get out of the driveway. There has been construction of one kind or another going on for years. It's ongoing, there's always gardeners, there's big trucks, deliveries. If there ever was an emergency, an ambulance wouldn't be able to get to the house. The fact that I couldn't get a permit to add to my house when it was affordable without building a garage, but the city wants to build one without, for each of these, each of these dwellings is hypocritical and unacceptable. At the very least, there needs to be two off-street parking spots for each dwelling, or change the laws so it's equal across the board. The proposed ideas of making the rules that are, that inhabitants can't have more than one car is not realistic, nor can it be enforced. Five dwellings is simply too much for this already very congested area." She said, "My daughter is learning to drive, and it's literally terrifying just to see her get out on the street." "I think anyone who wants to support this needs to come take a ride with us, try to leave for work, come home, and park, have a friend come over, and then you might have a more informed opinion."
Thank you, Mr. Trent. I appreciate it. I omitted one thing. Mr. Greenberg, will you please come up and talk about item E? The second, the first thing you were going to mention. Thank you.
Yes, I heard about this when I read the agenda the other day. It was the first time I knew about it. I'm assuming to some extent, but I understand that the members of this Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee were selected by staff without making these positions available to anyone other than the four people that they apparently anointed. Aside from the fact that this committee is about to be approved, I'm also concerned about the fact that the new council was going to be operating in an atmosphere of transparency and fairness. And I don't think, if my, I could be incorrect about the procedure, but if I'm not, it wasn't done in a spirit of transparency and fairness, which I think is paramount in this esteemed council. Therefore, I'm urging you to remove this committee from the consent calendar, and that steps be taken to provide for a completely new committee to be formed. It would consist of only city of Ojai residents, which it does not at this time. I believe two of the four are not residents, on the one hand, and also the opportunity for people on both sides of the issues to be appointed to this committee. I don't have a specific recommendation as to how this process would, would be taken, but I'm happy to, to add my opinion on that if I am asked. I hope that the selections, if they in fact are going to be made, are made in a transparent and equitable manner. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Mr. Miley, are you ready to speak about F?
Yes.
And Mr. Star Child, you're up next.
Hello.
Hi.
I was confused because I two, wrote two emails, one to the closed session and one to the open session.
No worries.
Okay. Most of your members will not remember that I've been involved with 408 North Montgomery for maybe seven years. Starting with the original suggestions for the city to build five to seven units, I worked with Mayor Johnson, ultimately under City Manager James Vega, we got involved with Habitat for Humanity. Applicants for sweat equity ownership will be the ones that buy the units. But they need to be currently residents of the Ojai Valley with priority given to those residing within the City of Ojai. It would be unfair to have applicants come from outside. The city bought this parcel out of bankruptcy years ago with a written condition that it had to be affordable housing if it was to be built on. The city is willing, the contract, as I understand, for a dollar a year for 99 years. I believe the price the city paid was about $165,000. Today, it's probably worth $600,000. Very valuable contribution to affordable housing. I think there was a discussion of adding additional monies to Habitat. In my opinion, that additional benefits to Habitat be limited to the planning and approval process, either low fee or no fee. After the affordable housing ownership is built, there needs to be some management structure for over 99 years to make sure that it's in place because they're not going to have a home HOA. Some type of overstop is necessary in case Ojai or Habitat ceases to exist. And the last thing, Franklin Drive and North Montgomery Streets are a very risky intersection. People are able to park within probably 20 feet of the intersection. When you come out of Franklin Drive, you look right and left and you see cars. You don't see, these are dead cars, not working. You don't see the ones that are going like this. So it needs to have a red zone maybe three times wide so that people can actually see what they're going to run into or not run into. So you need no more no parking curb distance there. And it's been discussed in the past, but it hasn't happened. That street is only 20 feet wide. You don't even want to know why, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
You should have smaller cars.
Star Child.
I support this Habitat project. I wore one of my two volunteer T-shirts from Habitat, Habitat for Humanity, from when I volunteered at the Port Wainimi project. I near, I live near the site, about over on Oak Street, like a block away. I know the intersection pretty well. It's true, it gets pretty busy. It's true that it's not, there's not a lot of visibility there. I echo the comment that there should be more daylighting of the intersection, no parking allowed for several feet, like 30 feet, from that intersection so that people can see. I understand some of the parking problems on the weekend. It gets pretty fold, filled up on Oak Street. I, I know what it's like to have to carry a toddler 100 yards to get home, but it's doable. I think there should be some handicap parking if there are people with disability placards to be able to use that. The other thing I agreed with was my neighbor who said that it's not fair that I'm not allowed to add an ADU or square footage to my house when Habitat's allowed to build. I think the answer to that is that everybody should be allowed to build affordable housing. And we need to make that more possible, not less possible. There's a huge affordable housing shortage here in Ojai. And the last thing I wanted to say on this subject is that I don't think this had to be a closed-session meeting. We saw the gist of what was talked about in closed session here in the agenda. It seems pretty straightforward. No state secrets had to be discussed, and I think it could have been open. And I'd like the city council and city attorney to think that just because something can be closed session, doesn't mean that it has to be closed session. And I think this is one of those instances. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we currently have three raised hands for our consent calendar.
Thank you.
Let's start with Lyron or Laron, then Cheryl, then Stephen. Lyron, you have the floor. You may unmute now.
My name is Laron Sconefeld. I live on Franklin Drive regarding the Habitat for Humanity project. From what I've heard, this, the concept of this project sounds like a really worthwhile project and a really positive thing for our community. But like some of our neighbors, I have some concerns about the number of units being proposed on this corner. I understand there are other developments nearby that have units that are fairly condensed, but this project is on a much smaller lot and it's located on the corner of a very narrow street. One side of this project will be on Franklin Drive, which a few people have mentioned before is not, is narrow enough that parking is not permitted on the street. I think we all have concerns about the impact to this already unsafe intersection. When turning on, from Franklin Drive onto Montgomery, if the view to the left where this lot is located is blocked, usually by parked cars, it's not possible to see what vehicles are coming. So in order to turn onto Montgomery, sometimes the only option is to blindly pull out onto the street as slowly as possible and hope no one hits you. You know, so I want to know if this is something that will be addressed. Several of us have brought it up before with absolutely no resolution. In addition, I expressed my concerns in the past about the neighbors being involved to ensure that we are heard, and I was assured that some sort of community, community involvement, such as a public forum, would be offered, and I have not heard anything of, as of yet. So at what point in this project is that expected to take place and how will that be communicated to us? Thank you.
Let me make one quick comment. There's many steps before the project will manifest. This is the beginning of the negotiation with the city and the end Habitat. So there'll be, it'll go in front of planning and all the normal steps. So there'll be lots of public opportunity, but I'm hearing loud and clear, and I, I had aunts and uncles that lived on Franklin in those apartments. I get it, how hard it is to get out, so it's something we'll take very seriously. Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, please.
Next, we have Cheryl, followed by Stephen. Cheryl, you have the floor. Cheryl, I see you've unmuted. You may speak now. Looks like Cheryl's having some technical difficulties. We'll come back. Stephen? Stephen, you have the ability to unmute and you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Stephen Johnson. I'm the attorney for Councilmember Rule. I, I'm talking, I, I apologize, I was hoping to get in during general comment, but I think this also falls under your Consent B as well with respect to legal fees. Today, Councilmember Rule received what appeared to be a fully-formed settlement agreement that she will not sign in connection with her request for indemnification and the cost of her successful defense of a slap suit that was brought against her. The thing that troubles me most, we can all disagree about legal issues. I think our positions have been validated. District Attorney has agreed with us. The court has agreed with us. I'm certain the Court of Appeal will agree with us. But the one thing you can't disagree with are simple economics, and the simple economics are these. For whatever reason, the city has chosen to spend more money to hire a lawyer to refuse to reimburse Councilmember Rule in the actual amount of her defense costs, then it has to simply pay them. My understanding is that last week, a discussion was made where an offer was to be made. Well, we didn't get an offer. Instead, we get a seven-page document that purports to include all kinds of terms that will not be agreed upon. This is just wasteful behavior. And I think the City of Ojai and citizens should be very upset and concerned by this. This is a situation where, in the first instance, whether you agree with what Councilmember Rule did or not, she sought to ensure transparency. And for that, she has been silenced, she's been attacked with a lawsuit, she's been refused to participate in meetings where fees are discussed. Councilmember Whitman, who sided with the plaintiffs in that case, filed a declaration. He participated, he voted. This is, this is not appropriate behavior. And, and just as an economic matter, it does not make sense. Whether you agree with Councilmember Rule or not, whether you think she has legal defenses or claims or not, the simple fact is the city has already paid more to consider her request for indemnification than, than the amount she has spent on indemnification to date. The amount being offered now is not enough to pay my bill. And, and unfortunately, in that situation, litigation is the only alternative, and it is outrageous and absurd to put Councilmember Rule in this position.
Thank you.
Next raised hand we have is Teal. Teal, you may unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Teal Rowe, Ventura County. I forgot to add to my public comment, and I guess I'm pigging back on the last commenter. I wanted to bring up Taylor Anderson's ethics workshop for the City of Ojai. I don't have the actual date or the timestamps for that workshop, but it was an ethics workshop that I highly, highly recommend to the pub...
Hold on, sorry. Teal, I, I let that comment in and I, I shouldn't have, but I don't want to pursue this very much longer, so maybe give us the short-end version and then we want to move on.
Please, public of Ojai, listen to the ethics workshop that Taylor Anderson hosted for the City of Ojai. It was highly, highly educational, and I so appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'll give our participant Cheryl one more chance, see if the microphone comes through.
Okay.
Cheryl, you have the floor. I see you've unmuted. And we still cannot hear, so we'll have to move on.
Okay. All right. That's everything we've got on consent. So, moving now to the council, does any, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent items?
I'm going to pull B and E.
Did you say B and E?
B and E.
B and E, okay.
I'm sure others might have others.
Is there any other consent items that people want to pull besides B and E? B is the warrants, E is the general plan update.
Actually, I'd like to pull F, to just bring something up that was a question that I had from a constituent.
Anything else?
I just want with some of the discussion items.
We're only on the consent part first, so we'll do the discussion in a minute. Mr. Whitman, are you okay? Anything else?
Well, I was gonna...
One of those.
Those, those are fine.
Wonderful. So, okay, great. So let's, do we, do we then get the vote for the approval on the remaining items? Is that our normal course?
Given that we pulled three of six, why don't we take the questions on the three?
Take the que, okay, sure. Let's start with B.
Okay.
Use it all.
As has been pointed out, I wanted to point out the legal bills that we have, both for our city attorneys and also Myers-Nave. And the city attorneys, we have, we have asked for details as to how these things get spent, and that is privileged and confidential, but we will be looking at it. And for Myers-Nave, I want to ask this council, you have seen their work. Was it worth $117,000? I'm going to move that we don't approve item 10 and pay them that $45,000 and we'll keep their fees at $73,000. I'm, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask for that. If not, we need to have their whip and find out what they spent that $117,000 on. Every one of you have seen their work. We all should be questioning their work. We did instruct, we did instruct, we did send a request both to the mayor, who then sent it to the city attorneys, not to bother with their settlement offer because it would not be accepted, yet we need to know how much they actually spent writing that seven-page document out. And I have a copy, copies here if anyone would like to see them. The only one, this particular settlement, and I'm, I'm talking about the amount of money that we will be spending, this particular settlement was, there is no option but to litigate. On this settlement, they name themselves as Attorneys for Ojai. Is that where we are now? Attorney for Ojai? You know, I think you should ask them how much they spent on this settlement document that they wrote. Was it 20? Was it 30? And that's where we're going to be. That's where we're going to be. You know what they spent $117,000 on.
I hear you. I hear you.
Okay. So I did, I'm making a motion that we do not approve item 10 for $45,268 added to their $72,000, and that at the very least, we request a whip to see exactly how they're spending this amount of money on what we got.
Let me just say one thing. So the difficulty about, I understand what's happening. And the difficulty about the situation is that if we encounter something like one of these warrants and we're looking at the item and we have serious questions about it, which is okay, and we should be looking at it, that what I would suggest that we do is we would go then to the city manager and ask for details on that, which we can absolutely do. So I can't, this was engaged before I started, which is fine, but instead of having, I can, this could be a very political, ugly conversation, which I'm not that interested in having at this moment, or we can say, we can hold off here, get the details is fine, as we would with any warrant. That's what I would propose is if we feel we want to hold off on that just to get detail, we can get that right away as we would with any of these and pull them aside. So you're proposing, without the big conversation, you're asking just for detail.
I'm proposing that we don't pay that bill until we get the details. I'm not, you know, that is my proposal. I'm not proposing that we don't pay the bill.
No, I hear you, and we have the right to do that.
And, and so I, I can imagine that we want to know what all of that $117,000 was spent on.
Fair enough. I hear what you're saying.
But we've already paid 73 of it.
Okay.
Because we've approved those warrants.
Understood. Got it. You have something to say? Oh, I thought you were gesturing.
I, I agree about not bringing this up as a political conversation, but I just wanted to say that, that the, that retaining them and bringing them on had less to do with the city versus you and more to do with the city overall, and so I'm in favor of keeping it.
Well, hold on, please. What I don't, what I, what I want to do is say, if we want to move this aside, we can and ask for detail, that is fine. What I don't want to do is debate whether or not we should have hired them. That's not what I'm interested in. What we can do is, we can ask that to be held off and we can bring it up with, I'm going to propose that it's Ben when he arrives back. So I'm happy to entertain that, which we would do with any warrant. We can postpone it that, that little, but I don't want to have the argument whether or not we should have hired them.
Yeah, I'm not having that argument.
Okay.
I'm having the argument that the costs are excessive.
Okay. But we would do that on many things, it seems to me, in this item. So I'm, I'm happy to say we would like some more detail on that item. I'm totally fine with proposing that, but it's, it's, we're, it's, we're too involved to have that conversation about the detail of whether or not it was overspent.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Mr. Alameda.
So just to, to clarify, we'd move the warrants forward because this is work that has been incurred and provide the council extra detail on item number 10.
Okay.
That is not what I am suggesting. What I'm suggesting is these warrants come to us to approve, and I don't think we know what we're approving. I think there's extensive expenditures and we need to look at that and see and, and decide that, yes, they were, they, they were warranted or no, they weren't warranted. We are blind as to these costs, and that's what I'm saying. I understand that they've done the work, but the warrants come to us to approve the payment for that work. I understand that they've done the work, but the warrants come to us to approve the payment for that work. That is our job. Um, and i- if it weren't our job, we wouldn't, this wouldn't be the system that we have, right? I mean, we know that this work has been done. These are, so-
Sorry, there's just one, just one little point. I have to say, I, I've looked at all the warrants many times, sitting where these people are, and there's very large items, including our sheriff, for example. And I, I say, well, I look at the item, and I'm making an assumption that, that people are making good judgment. So I'm making an assumption that there's good judgment. I'm not asking for every item, and I'm not asking you to do anything. What I'm saying is, it's so, um, there's an investment in this one. That seems like the principle would have been, I, there's many times when we were looking at other pieces, for example, related to rights of nature and those kinds of things, that we looked at the bill and thought, wow, that's a lot, that was surprising. But what I mean to say is, um, I hear your point, and it feels very heated at the moment, and I'm trying to move us so that we can get through our items. Um, now, if you feel you really want to insist and say, is the work worth the money? It feels like we have to, we've incurred the work at the rate that they, that was approved. So, is that not correct?
Also, I would like to address, councilmember, we understand that a few of you have requested legal bills, um, which staff is working on collecting for outside counsel. So if you'd like to request the bills for this period as well, we can have staff extend that time.
I would like that.
There, it's for, you've requested for a long period of time. It does take a little bit of time to compile and make sure that we have everything collected, but I actually met with staff today to make sure that that's moving forward.
I would appreciate that detail.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're, you're addressing, um, your firm or all firms?
All firms. You had requested all firms. My firm has provided the bills to you. We are working on getting the remainder of the bills to you.
So your firm is, uh, basically collecting the bills from other firms?
No.
No?
No. We just checked in to make sure that your request was moving forward and being addressed, because we had sent our portion, but the outside counsel bills, we noticed, weren't done. So just letting you know that those are still forthcoming. If you'd like to request that staff include the period up until this month, we can do that as well, or we can ask staff to do that as well.
Well, I think at the very least, we need to have the whips or the details on, on, on lawyer bills, you know. I mean, we can talk, I think that's a discussion to have when we have the mid, midterm financial review. Um, but in the interim, we are going to be moving forward, and, um, this council has no idea what the instruction was to the attorneys. Um, you know, w- w- when we went to Myers-Nave, we don't know what their instructions were. We don't, we don't know anything, except for that we're getting these incredible bills. That's what we know. So, um, at some point, we have to take and, uh, take our fiduciary responsibility seriously, as we said. We're chalking up money, and it's going to surpass the amount that I'm, that I am-
Understood.
-requiring for indemnification. It's going to surpass that.
My guess is that most of the time, attorneys are contracted with, and we're not clear on what we're asking them to do, but we do get the bills. I, I want to offer the proposal that we are getting the detail from all of the firms, including Taylor, Ms. Anderson's firm, and that we do evaluate it seriously and decide, are we spending the money wisely? Um, I would not support your motion to not pay this firm with the work that's already been contracted with an agreed-upon rate.
Okay, um, so I think, I understand, uh, Ms. Anderson, what you were saying about it's, it's, it's a heavy lift to go back all those years. Um, I would say we prioritize, uh, Myers-Nave, as they are current and will continue to, uh, bill us. And I'm assuming that, you know, because they don't go back years, we have all of that information. They should be sending it with their bills.
So what we can do-
This is kind of off book.
Yes.
We're almost done.
The notice, understood.
Um, the request was for in the last year. There are several firms that have done work. Those bills are being collected. Um, staff who's working on the project will be notified to prioritize sending Myers-Nave bills ahead of the other collection of, uh, outside counsel to address your concerns. Is that satisfactory?
Yes, that's satisfactory, and at some point, I would like some, um, instruction on if we don't feel, um, able to question and put on hold bills, why do these warrants even come to us? I mean, if we, if we're just, are we just rubber stamping? Is that what we're doing? We're just saying, okay, we know you, you wrote this money? Um, or are we really supposed to be able to look at it and say, hmm? So it seems to me that there is a procedural problem here, so I would like clarity on that. I mean, okay, thank you.
If I could just comment on the, the procedure. So, on the last page of the warrant resolution, where these items are spelled out, these are all the larger invoices that you're paying. So each of these items on here has a budget that's been approved by the council. It has an underlying contract that's been approved by the council, so the scope of work there is known. And then these come on payment of what the demand was, and if there are questions there, um, typically, these are easy calls to staff, if it's a, who's this vendor, what are they doing? Or if it's a more robust discussion, that's when it's appropriate to come back and provide the underlying work.
Thank you.
There's multiple steps here, so none of these firms has a scope of work that's, that's unknown. These are approved contracts with a very tight scope.
That's my understanding.
Um, just to make a point, the council never approved a budget for Myers-Nave. When I was around, the council never knew what was being asked of Myers-Nave or approved that, as far as I remember.
I, I'm going to want to move on now.
Um, I, I can, I, well, I was in that closed session.
So, so we're, we, we're getting-
We're way off track.
I'm just saying, you know, it, it wasn't done. I can say what didn't happen in closed session, I assume. Um, I didn't have a baby, uh, my dog, you know, didn't throw up on the floor.
Stay on track. Thank you. Okay.
I'm, I think I am on track.
Okay, well, I want to move on. Um, I want to go to, did you, did you want to bring up something with what?
I, I do have one really quick comment.
Is, is it gonna keep us on the subject?
Yeah, it will keep us on the subject.
Is it important? Is it necessary? I, I, because I really want us to keep going, and we can.
So call a vote.
What, what, we-
We have to approve item?
I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go through the rest of the items, and then we'll see if, if, hopefully that we're gonna get an agreement on all of the items and go forward.
Are we still at E and F that we're pulling?
We still have E and F. So I would love to go to E. So, so who pulled, who pulled E out?
I pulled E.
Okay, let's hear it.
I'm concerned, um, with the process, and, um, that it, once again, that it was just staff calling five people. Um, I'm concerned with the five people. Um, they seem to have, uh, a particular way of thinking about a cl- about the climate and prioritizing certain, uh, okay, I'm just gonna talk about the process. The process, this is not a stakeholders', uh, process. This is, I know some people, they call me the most, I'm gonna call them. Uh, that's not the way this process should be done. We, we have no information about whether it's a Brown Act, uh, committee, or isn't it a Brown Act committee? If it is, why is it? If it's not, why isn't it? And how long is this supposed to be, and how much influence are they actually going to have, you know? So, this process, mostly it's about the process, and I think that the, uh, committee is already tainted by the fact that the process was not transparent. Um, I think that, I mean, I've had two people already say, you know, I'd like to be on that, you know, I, I design and build solar arrays. Wow, well, that would be a good person to have. Um, so that's really my concern about this item. So I would, I would, uh, I would, uh, hope that we would, um, send this back to staff. We did not give staff, you know, in my mind, adequate direction on what we were looking for. Um, and, and I'm willing to take responsibility for that, and I'm willing to say that there's a better way to do a community advisory panel, um, and I would hope that we would do that.
I, I want to support you, and I'm happy to turn it into a motion. I agree that I would like to open this up to the community, and we see that there's some interesting people, obviously, invested. We've also got many, many public comments, including from this room, that people were invited without asking to be on it, but they're happy to be on it. So it seems to me there's a great opportunity to then open it up to the public and invite constituents who would like to come and be a part of it. So, I would, if, if you, I'm willing to make a motion that we bring it back to staff and set up a public forum for which people can then, um, we set up a criteria to be on the committee and the scope, and make it be more widely available.
And I would like to note, to answer your Brown Act question, because they're advisory to staff, staff isn't asking for approval on this commission, that will, this will not be a Brown Act body, because they're advisory to staff and not created by council. But the direction to have a more competitive process is, of course, within your purview, and ability to give direction to staff.
I mean, competitive is an interesting word. I would say we'd want to be inclusive, not, that's a quibble.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It would be something like, there are names here that, for example, in the hotelier situation, you really would want them to be on there, and it's not, they, it's, they were invited, but they maybe haven't agreed. So, we'd want to make it be a robust body enough to answer the questions, so I made a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got just, just a quick one on this item in general. Um, actually, the economic diversification focus group. Um, I know that, you know, I proposed this, uh, potential segment of the general plan.
Yeah.
And I did have a, you know, large degree of concern that we address the ability of the residents of the town to, um, you know, harmonize.
Are you saying the economic development part or the climate part?
I'm, no, I'm not talking about climate.
The economic development.
Economic development, that I, my understanding was, or what I requested was, that we have a segment that not only addresses tourism and economic development, but that also addressed, um, how we make the town more livable for those people who, you know, are residents here in town.
Yeah.
And it may be that that's part of this, but I'm not reading literally that that's, you know, so, if we're gonna look at, you know, criteria for how we're gonna select people to be on a committee, I want to make sure we have people who are interested in that idea that, you know, we, uh, I live here, and I want Ojai to be more livable.
I, I, I agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, I would like that to be a part of that committee, too. Yes, please.
Um, so I have a couple of, uh, thoughts about this. Um, so this is a staff advisory committee, so my, so I'm, I'm always gonna be in favor of, or lean toward community participation, e- e- accepting the, the, you know, nominations, the interviews, the whole nine yards. But at the end of the day, this is, this is a staff, like, staff has to work with these individuals. And so I would lean toward a process that lets staff, uh, choose who would best advise them in this capacity. I'm, I personally like the names. I like, I'm, I'm all for Star Child and Larry in particular. And I think we have, Bill Wyrick is here, too. Um, love working with Michelle Ellison, Steve Colome, uh, Kathleen Nolan, Phil White. I mean, these are all names of, and Jamie Fleming, these are all names of, of people who are really, uh, invested in these topics. Um, so if it's possible for us, I will, I will support the motion, if it's possible that we give staff, or maybe, you know, that, that we give staff, like, the first round of interviews and, and conversations, and then, uh, and then we could bring it back almost as, as a ratification process.
Yeah, I support, I mean, if, if, if you mean this, I support it a hundred percent. I would definitely, we can't say, if you have a committee that has everybody who applies on it, it's too unwieldy, of course. So there's gotta be some selection criteria, and I'm always, I think, like you, I do want the staff to, they're gonna have to work with this group. So I do want them to weigh in very seriously.
Yes.
So if, if it's amended in the sense that, and staff ha- staff has the initial round of interviews or something along those lines, I, I'm no object to that.
Great.
So that, that would change this into a Brown Act body?
Okay.
If you got involved in that way of ratifying staff's choice, rather than a receive and file?
Oh.
Yeah, no, I see that.
Okay, then I would be-
So, one way around that is to potentially, um, request that staff make a, you know, open application.
That's all.
Some, somebody has-
It's publicized.
Somebody has proposed that it be open to Ojai residents as opposed to the, the world. Um, and so that would be my suggestion, and that, you know, they come back with us a report on what they expect to be their criteria for selecting as opposed to having us approve.
That does solve it for me. Um, it, it would be, that it would be a publicized opening in an advisory committee, something along those lines. I'm, we, I, I'm interested in avoiding the Brown Act possibility for this committee. And if, if you, my suggestion would be that residence is, is interesting, but I would probably call it sphere of influence, meaning in the sense that you may have a business-interested person whose work is here or business is here, but they don't happen to live in the valley. You don't object to that.
I have a, um, so for me, uh, what I'm particularly interested in is would be a criteria of some sort where it's, and I don't know if we have a, a part, a part of that, but a wide range of,
That's what I'm looking for.
Of experiences and expertise and, uh, sort of willingness, you know, rather than, um, you know, kind of a, a narrower. So, so I would like to have diversification of stakeholders as one of the criterias, if possible.
I love that, too.
And whatever that means, um, you know, I'm perfectly happy to leave it to staff. I certainly trust Lucas and the planning department to be able to take that kind of direction and implement it.
So if we were to say, we, we want to publicize the opening for this advisory committee, encouraging a wa- a wide range of voices across the community in sphere of influence, something like that?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, there's a way for them to put it together. I mean, 10 is unwieldy, but it can be, you know, open communication, and then the community advisory panel distills, and, you know, actually presents that kind of a thing, um, to the staff, rather than just kind of, let me go into my own head and come up with what I think.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get that?
And to-
Oh, please, go ahead.
To clarify, um, are we, is staff reporting back to you on the criteria before they publicize?
I don't think so. I think, well, I heard you say, we're trusting them to do it.
Yeah, just that it had, we would like a, a diversity of stakeholders and voices and experience and expertise across the board.
I, I think I can summarize it sort of quickly. It's instead of the staff reaching, instead of the staff reaching out to invite people to the community, in addition to what they have already done, they're opening it up publicly, possibly it's an ad in the paper or whatever, they will decide that, what the means are to invite community members who would like to apply to be on this advisory committee, encouraging a wide range of voices. That's, I think, what I'm hearing, the intention.
I think I would just like to see it a quick look at to make sure, because you don't want to send something out to have it come back with questions or whatever, just a quick-
She's saying if we ratify, then it changes the nature of what it is. Um, so I, I guess what I'm suggesting is, we're trusting our city manager enough to select the right people.
So, Kim, are you, are you, are you saying that, uh, we should have the chance to see the public invitation? Is that, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
The public invitation. So in that sense, we're not, is that a problem to say we were looking for?
No, but I agree with the mayor, that's starting to get into the day-to-day operations that you entrusted Ben to do, right? If you're giving the direction-
That's what I want to suggest.
Um, it would also potentially delay the ability of the committee to get off the ground.
I would like that, too.
Yeah.
I, I guess I would just suggest, we don't ask to look at all the advertising for all of the things that happen at the moment. We're not asking for that kind of approval.
Right. And, and I spoke with Ben today, um, about this, and, and he understood completely, uh, the issues, and we talked a little bit about, you know, what, what we could do to, to do exactly this. So he's cognizant of it, and I think that any one of us are able to speak to him and give him input as to what we would like to see, um, and, and that might be the best way and the most efficient way to move forward.
I like that.
Are you comfortable with that, Kim?
That'll work.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've got it.
Repeat, mayor?
I knew you were gonna have to be that.
I, I have a tidy motion, if you'd like me to repeat.
No, it's okay. Well, I'm saying, we're, tell me if anybody isn't okay with what I'm about to say. Um, we are advising staff to promote the openings of this advisory committee to the public. Um, we are advising staff to promote the openings of this advisory committee to the public, encouraging a wide range of voices, and we are authorizing the staff to administer the admission of that, that committee. Something like that. You okay with that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right.
Motion understood.
Thanks.
Roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, I know we approved that one and we still have these others, but you wanted to talk about F.
Yes, I just wanted clarification on F, um, that in, in the third paragraph under the discussion, it says middle-income households, and we had some questions about that. And I just wanted to, uh, to, uh, hear what, what that meant, or clarify.
You're asking Ms. Anderson?
Yes, Ms. Anderson. I have that here. Um, so, middle income is, uh, a quick term that is used in the memorandum of understanding that the city has entered into with Habitat for Humanity. And, drum roll, hold on. Is it? Apologies for the delay.
That's good.
That, yeah, it's, yeah, it was. Thirty-six thousand annual salary, is that correct?
So, without the specific language, it ends up being, uh, based, the initial calculation is based off the median income, which is roughly about ninety-six thousand. It's thirty percent of a hundred and twenty percent of moderate income, uh, which that math works out to about thirty-six thousand dollars in income for the people that would be able to qualify for this housing.
Great, thank you. So that.
Yeah, I apologize.
So that, that sounds like low income. It sounds like it would be meeting the needs of, of low-income residents.
So the staff report should have been more clear. The way that the MOU reads is low to, to the median income, I believe.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also just wanted to remind everyone that we are gonna be going through multiple steps, dealing with parking and some of the questions that were raised. And I'm in very much in support of the project and of moving forward.
And just a slight addition also, which is that we'll soon be getting a report out publicly of all of the permitted affordable housing projects, so we can all know exactly where they're at and at what stage and when they will be coming. My, oh, please, go ahead.
Does that include, um, affordable housing that we have built over the years?
Uh, we could ask for that. Um, I, I.
I don't want to make it too difficult, but I, I just think that would be really interesting as well.
Some of it is on this, no, that would be interesting. You're right.
Just to know where we've done, what we've done. I think, give us some background info.
Actually, there's some good history there.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
No, thank you, wonderful. So, might I ask, would anybody like to entertain a motion that we approve the consent items, um, A through F, except for we already did E?
I'll, um, I'll make a motion to approve consent items, A through F minus E.
I will second that. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember May. Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, do you guys have enough energy to take on number two discussion item? Yes? Okay, we've gotta do this. Let's do it. Okay.
I wanted to pull that, there's things on that discussion that I wanted to.
Well, you don't have to pull it because we're talking about it.
Well, to delay.
To delay it.
You can make a motion. To delay to a future, um.
Oh, well, you're wel, well, you're welcome to make a motion.
Okay, and I would like to make a motion to pull item two under discussion and delay to a future. To pull item two for discussion, the City of Ojai Traffic Motor Officer, and, um, move it to a different date.
So, and next time, when we approve the agenda, you might do it then.
Yeah, that's what I asked earlier.
Oh, you asked for that and I didn't hear you?
Yeah, you said, yeah, it's, it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay, so you are making a motion to move that to a future agenda item?
I would like to do that, and there's others as well. So I'm gonna start with number two.
Okay.
Um, I believe we have people who are here to talk about this.
Yes, and we, we moved it, this will be the, the third time, so.
So the motion would need a second to be able to move forward. Is there a second?
Okay.
So motion fails for lack of a second.
Right. Okay, so let's go on with number two and hear the staff report.
Alrighty, we're here.
Ms. Newman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, uh, make this presentation. There is no, uh, PowerPoint, so I will present this to you myself. You have your staff report in your packet. But I would like to take a moment to explain the driving force of really why we recommended this traffic motor component, because we understand that spending three hundred fifty thousand dollars of the city money, um, is not taken lightly. Uh, so when we, probably when I first took the position here is when we started receiving complaints about our, our traffic-related issues here in the city. Um, and so we decided to take a look at our data. And that data is really what is the focus of our recommendation and why we made this recommendation. So you've read in your staff report the most recent data on traffic accidents specifically for the City of Ojai, which includes that at the end of 2024, our injury accidents were up by forty-five percent. Ojai was ranked in the top five in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two for accidents involving bicyclists, which is the most recent information released by the Office of Traffic Safety. In 2024, we had one traffic fatality, which is not in your staff report. Also not in your staff report is the fact that for January of this year already, we are up in traffic and injury traffic accidents compared to January of 2024. So this data, and it is data, something that we track regularly, is significant. And I will tell you, from my position, we currently do not have the resources to dedicate it to specifically enforcement of traffic to make a positive impact and turn around some of these numbers. Which is why we made the recommendation for this traffic motor position. This is probably the most cost-efficient, versatile and flexible resource that we can recommend to address the variety of traffic problems that we have in our city, specifically in the downtown area, um, and in our Albeida community where it's very difficult to do any type of traffic enforcement because of the narrow, excuse me, the narrow roads. Also with concerns, uh, with e-bikes and pedestrian traffic, which are all congregated in such a small area of our downtown area. A traffic motor has the ability to shift and focus its resources specifically in certain areas at any given time versus piecemeal, um, uh, construction projects, which typically only affect one street or one intersection at a time and are sometimes cost prohibitive. A traffic motor is more efficient than adding a regular patrol Tahoe, which, um, again, is not, um, in our downtown crowded area. It's just, it, it doesn't work very well. Um, I believe it was Councilmember Whitman, um, stated in a prior meeting that it's the combination of education, engineering and enforcement that really has the greatest impact on our traffic safety. And again, with the resources we currently have, we lacked, we lack, currently lack that enforcement component to really make a difference. Right now, we have access to a used motorcycle that we can purchase, um, at half the cost of a new motorcycle. Uh, this isn't, this isn't a used motorcycle we found on some random lot somewhere. This is a motorcycle that's currently owned by the City of Thousand Oaks and maintained by the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, so we know this motorcycle is up to standards and it has been maintained, uh, correctly. Um, and, and, and really probably the only thing we may have to do is change the city seal. And you didn't hear it from me, but we may be, may be able to get some other freebies along with it, so we'll see. I'll work on it. The purchase of a new motorcycle, excuse me, the, the, if we decided to wait on this and, and purchase a new motorcycle down the road, because this opportunity of purchasing a used motorcycle may not be available for much longer, um, the current wait time for a new motorcycle would be nine months to a year. And obviously the costs go up significantly the, the longer we wait. Um, if you were to decide to implement this position, there are traffic grants that we would be able to take advantage of if we had a full-time traffic motor for the city. And we would exhaust all, research and exhaust all of those, um, possibilities. Also, if this was something that the council decided to, um, go with for future purposes, there are, um, options of electric motorcycles out there that we would be able to research to align with the city's vision of electrification. Finally, the Sheriff's Office would be amenable to a one-year trial period, because we understand this is a big, this is a big step for the city. We would include monthly traffic reports to you, um, on the effect, effectiveness of that position and ensuring that it, it's accomplishing the goals that it was meant to accomplish. With that, I will open it up to any questions that you might have.
I do have a question. Um, now, we, we see the officer or an officer periodically on a motorcycle in town. So that is somebody that you're just using here and there?
Right, so, so we do use a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety that our agency has secured. With that, we hire, well, shouldn't say we hire, we use motorcycles from other stations such as Thousand Oaks and Camrio to come up here and do
Okay.
traffic enforcement on that grant.
Right.
But again, it's at the availability that they have, so we don't have the flexibility to tell them when we want them. It's when they can.
Well, this leads into my next question, which is, I'm going to make the presumption, but I would love your confirmation, that you would select an officer that you believe, I'm assuming, would work well with the Ojai community, that works well with the department, because I heard that concern in the past.
Oh, absolutely. We understand, you know, we understand there were concerns when we had a traffic motor up here back in two thousand and one, I think it was from two thousand and five. And, you know, we're not, we're gonna look for someone that fits the City of Ojai. We're not looking for someone to come up here and write a hundred tickets a day. We want someone to fit in, you know, and, and ensure that we're having an impact the best we can in traffic safety, and it's not only gonna be strictly enforcement.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Other questions from staff? Or for staff?
Yeah, I have a, a question. Um, so, um, a, as far as you sort of, the, uh, process or strategy by which these, um, uh, advantages we could, would have, like, so assisting in a major traffic accident recreation, uh, traffic planning and safety for special events, supplemental resource, um, do you have a strategy or is there a model that you use to, um, sort of integrate all of these and come up with a plan for the officer on, on, you know, their goals and our goals as they're listed here, basically?
Sure. So with, with every position that we have, it's, it's gonna be dependent on what your goals are and, and, and using our data to find out where we need to focus those resources on. And because we have that traffic motorcycle that's been implemented in other stations within our Sheriff's Office jurisdiction, we would, uh, we would reach out to those resources to make sure that we're coming up with the best laid-out plan to impact the city here.
Great. Um, I have a couple other, really brief questions. Um, so, I, I'm just interested and, and glad that the traffic officer would work in partnership with Public Works, and I assume that that also is a model that you can check on with other towns, how that officer does work with Public Works, um, for recommendations, solutions and best practices, like what kind of information are you looking for from Public Works? What kind of information are you giving Public Works? Um, that kind of thing. I think that would also be, uh, incredibly helpful to bring, um, to bring the two agencies together. So I am definitely in support of that. Um, the engineering for sure, you know, so for traffic calming and things like that.
Absolutely. So this position comes with a lot of dedicated training for that individual. So, when they get here, when they work, they're basically considered an expert in this particular field. So they would reach, they would work hand-in-hand with our Public Works, um, and our, you know, our other organizations within the city to ensure that we're posting parking signs correctly, we're laying out curb, um, painting correctly, um, looking at intersections and making sure, you know, making recommendations for the best safety plan, all of those things.
I think that would be very, very helpful for, um, Public Works as well. And finally, um, the last, the last paragraph, and to quote, uh, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Lang, "We love free money, so yes, let's go for the additional grant money." And you, you sound like you're on top of it, so thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Yeah.
I was just curious about, um, it's been brought to my attention, to do like an interactive speed signs throughout before we invest in this type of money, um, to put that throughout the city to see, to gather the data before we make a commitment?
We could, and there's nothing, you know, there's nothing against that. However, you know, when you, we already currently have a couple of those on Grand Avenue and there's, the feedback that we're, that we would get from some of those, um, doesn't account for when people are running stop signs or when people are distracted driving. It may account for speed, but those aren't the only reasons that we have accidents within our city.
And then my other question, as far as when you said, um, helping, you know, distracted driving, pedestrian traffic, bicyc, bicyclists and e-bikes, because I know e-bikes is a hot topic with everyone. But it, it seems to me that with that, the focus, if we could work with like OUSD with the children and educating the children and giving them something to do versus, you know, they're not in front of their laptops, they're outside, all of that stuff. So if we could go about a different way addressing it as a community for the safety?
Absolutely. So, you know, again, it's, it's going back to education, enforcement and engineering. Education's always the first and foremost. And, you know, we've done some of it. We could do more, absolutely. There are, uh, programs and campaigns that you've probably seen other cities implement in terms of enforcement of e-bikes and really trying to, to, to make a dent in that. And those are all things that we could look at and enforce. Um, again, if you look at those cities that have implemented those things, they have dedicated traffic enforcement units. Um, it's, it's not really coming down to their patrol deputies. So, um, having a resource like this would help us in doing that.
Mr. Whitman?
Yeah, um, so we're, we're, we're looking to budget or approve a single traffic officer. So has there been any analysis of when their, you know, what shifts they would work?
It would be normally with, you know, when we look at this particular position in other stations, they work a, a, what we call a four-ten, forty hours a week, ten-hour days. Um, they do on, you know, one of those days, they usually end up in court because they are going in front of a judge and, and, um, regarding the tickets that they, uh, end up issuing. However, that's completely flexi, flexible, and that's usually how it works in other cities. They have special events that they work, so if they have to flex their hours to attend a special event that we're having on the weekends, um, that kind of comes with that position. Um, the other thing I want to point out also is, we don't have to backfill behind this position. So it's not a regular patrol position where we're having to, um, fill behind them um, when they may have to take a day off or when they're in training or something like that. So we're not paying overtime for that position.
Right. So, um, can we direct that we have a traffic officer?
Like on the weekends?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be, you know, optimal times to have.
We, we could look at that. Um, you know, again, it, it might be something where we shift them around, um, and, and really look at our data and see where, you know, we're needed most. Obviously, we realize that the weekends are, you know, pretty crazy up here. Um, but part of the incentive is, you know, we like to give them a weekend off here and there. It's only one individual. Usually you have several, um, that have the ability to switch shifts, but with only one officer, you know, we're, we'll, we'll, we'll be as flexible, but also address some of the problems that we realize.
I got one more question, and that is, um, and it may be for, um, our city attorney or you, but, um, can we require registration of e-bikes? Can we require licensure for e-bikes? And can we adopt our own regulations related to safe use of e-bikes on our city streets?
You can, and I, you could probably answer this as well. You can, but that will not prevent. You can, and you could probably answer this as well. You can, but that will not prevent them from being on the roadways.
Right. Well, I wanted to suggest, I imagine that this would probably come up in two weeks as an item, since most of us probably hear from our constituents like every day. So it's something that I'm trying to look at what other cities are doing. So I think it's a subject.
Yeah, I would recommend it for council goals. We can, I can resend the memo that we've shared with all of you on the options of policies that you can adopt. I don't want to get too far down this path, but
Yeah. So just my general understanding is that we can, you know, adopt safety measures as long as they're at least as stringent as
The state.
State or county or whatever the jurisdiction, you know, we can go above and beyond that and say, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm not asking for any discussion about regular, that'd have to be another item, but we can do that legally.
You do have some options available to you, but there are also limitations that I think you have to contend with that you can't straight prohibit them is one of them, right? So it's definitely, I think, as the mayor said, there's an appetite for it with the community. We've heard a lot of public comment about it. It would be best for a separate item and discussion about it.
And that's what we'll do. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions? Yes, please.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So, and since we are, I had questions about the new laws related to e-bikes. But I, but I hear us saying that we're going to bring this back as an agenda item, so. So I have a, I have a question on the accidents, the increase in accidents. So it it says here that injury accidents have increased forty-five percent. How, how much, how much were, like, how much are we talking about in total, like?
So, yeah. For twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-two and the prior year in twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-two.
Okay. And did any of those have to do with the lights on, like at the crosswalks, like lighting issues?
Specifically, I do, I could, I do not know.
What you mean, the lighted crosswalks?
Yeah, like for, for like at the arcade, you know, we've, we've heard so many times that lighting is an issue and people can't see and cars can't see. And so I was wondering how much of it had to do with distracted driving versus how much it had to do with things that we could do that are better in terms of pedestrian walkways.
Sure. And that's something that we are working with Public Works with. They had a law come out in January where we have to make sure and keep spaces that are on on our crosswalks and we're working with Public Works to ensure that those are properly marked because they are very high-risk areas. But in terms of ask your question in regards to how many accidents were as a result of something like that, I would have to go and look. Majority of our accidents get labeled as a result of speed, but that's kind of a catch-all. You know, speed is for anything when you're just distracted. There's no specific violation for just being distracted. It's more of, it's a speed violation because someone's driving too fast for, to be able to pay, pay attention.
I had heard from Ms. Palmer that that the lighted crosswalks are, will be a priority for our city. So and it's something, it's been two years at least since you guys brought it up last time. So anyway, please continue.
These things, this keeps me awake at night.
I know. No, you're not alone.
And then also, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on on Councilmember Meng's question about the speed signs. Because we did the drown, the slow down drown efforts and the speed humps and the signs, the interactive signs really did make a difference. And I know we don't have those exact numbers, but the residents on that street, nobody wants to let go of both of those things because they did actually slow down the traffic.
Right, right.
So are there, I mean, have have we exhausted all other options of slowing down, slowing down traffic without looking at, without hiring a motorcycle cop?
When you, from our perspective, when you look at the areas that it spans, it's not just one particular area. So we're talking about throughout the entire city. So the best way that we can address that was to recommend this because again, it can focus on multiple areas in front of the school at Noradoff on Kuyama versus trying to put road humps on every single street or trying to, even if we, even if we did, for example, even if you did pass a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, that is only as good as whether or not we're able to enforce it because a speed sign is, we've already seen over the last two years because of our statistics have gone up, that that one or two speed signs on Grand Avenue is not slowing people down because that's exactly where we had our traffic fatality.
Well, I'm hearing you say, you're saying it's enforcement and engineering and education, if I heard you right.
A hundred percent, yes.
Shall I move on to public comments? Okay. Thank you very much. William Wirick, Larry Steingold and Sue Williamson.
Evening, Council.
Hello.
Thank you. I wanted to, in the same theme that I spoke earlier about making sure that the council is fully informed and has been provided all necessary documentation on the issue. I noticed that the item says enter into agreement. It does not say enter to a contract revision. Is this council aware that back in twenty twelve, there was a Ventura County Auditor Controller Report indicating that there was a problem with city law enforcement contracts not being updated in a proper and timely fashion? And I believe that might still be the case here where there has not been a proper contract update since, what, for decades? That does not meet current statutory requirements for government contracting, especially for the largest single expenditure that a city engages in. Furthermore, this this debate went on and and discussion went on extensively years ago. And one of the things that culminated in was a document that I'm, I would hope that you're provided called Report to the City of Ojai Assessment of the Policing Contract, February twenty twenty-two, presented by Kalisco LLC. I would hope that you have that document. In that document, it's very precise about saying, there are some reasons why the city of Ojai is an outlier at the top end of per capita expenditure for law enforcement. In twenty twenty-two, it was four hundred and sixty-six dollars per capita, which is, for example, let's compare to Rolling Hills Estates, two hundred and eighty-six dollars per capita, Fillmore, two hundred and twenty-six dollars per capita, Solvang, three hundred and ten. What's driving this? Well, part is the fact that the policy of the city of the Ventura Police, of the Ventura Sheriff's Department is a minimum three-shift twenty-four-sever coverage, two patrol cars per shift twenty-four-seven. And when you have a very, and no fractional allocation of that, when you have a very small city like we are, it drives it up. Now, I'm okay, get to number two and three. I'd like to get into this further with y'all. But anyway, number two, the fact is that overhead is assigned in the current agreement at fifty percent, even though the the city only accounts for about thirty percent of the population. All right. And number three, we own, the taxpayers own, the police station that services the entire area and has not had a lease update in many years. So I think this is germane because I think this could have been part of the negotiation in terms of how to handle this needed action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirick. Larry Steingold, Sue Williamson and then Sheriff Rivera.
Larry Steingold. I support the motor officer. For the past eight years, I've driven, biked, and now for the past eight weeks, walked the city. And you see a lot of things. You see people driving blissfully through stop signs. Speeding, we know. E-bikes, we know. Parking in red lines, parking at corners, what have you. It's all about enforcement. It's it's fear. Nobody likes getting a ticket. I mean, if you want to start out giving a hundred warnings a day for the first week, so that everybody, that you get everybody's attention and the tourists finally understand that they can't make circular turns in the middle of the intersection and what have you. I mean, give warnings and then lower the hammer because a hundred tickets a day doesn't bother me because that's the reason you're here. Your reason is not to be loved. Your reason is, you're, the desire is to be feared. So that, that's enforcement. Okay. I mean, it's very simple. Okay. The fact that it's three hundred thousand dollars seems a bit large. I mean, you know, the forty times fifty-two is two thousand forty. At a hundred dollars a day, it's two hundred grand. Okay. Another buck and a half, where's that going? I understand liability and this and that. It just seems a bit too much. But we need the police officer, even if it's just for a year, that they're giving us a first-time rate for three, for three hundred, one year, and then it goes up every year after that? Or do we have an option to go one year at a time, what have you? What's the deal? But if we need, now, does that officer do anything outside of the city limits during that forty hours? Do we get a rebate? Do we get something? Seriously. I mean, if he's going outside the count, outside the city, we shouldn't be paying for that time, even though he's on duty. Right. So especially if we're talking forty hours. So vote for the police officer, have him give warnings so everybody gets everybody's attention and that he's visible because I know when we're out there at four to five o'clock on Fridays, supporting or protesting, people are driving through the crosswalks with people walking in the crosswalks. And it's obvious and it's locals and it's tourists and it's everybody, not everybody, but just a few. And they're very, it's egregious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Sue Williamson, Chief Rivera, Assistant Sheriff Rivera and then Bill Miley.
Sue Williamson, I live in Teramina. Hi. And I didn't know you were going to have another meeting about this issue, so, but I'm still going to read what I wrote. I am in favor of the dedicated motorcycle officer. Over the weekend, I was very disturbed by the behavior of four boys on electric bikes at the Trump protest rally. They were there with the pro-Trump group of about five people. I watched as they drove their bikes onto the sidewalk, causing people to jump aside to avoid being hit. And they were egged on by the Trump group and their parents, according to them. This is not surprising, given the current lawlessness and criminal activity of Trump and his benefactor Elon Musk. I posted on Facebook about this and got over sixty thumbs ups. There were numerous comments describing these boys having harassed many people. They have yelled racist slurs, violated traffic laws, almost causing accidents and intentionally go too close to people on sidewalks, including the elderly. The police have, according to the sergeant I talked to, ticketed a few and even confiscated some of the illegal e-bikes that don't have pedals. And I'd really like clarification on what's legal and what isn't. But the problem still persists and I worry that it isn't just a problem of illegal bikes. It's also an attitude of bullying and belligerence within the context of our current dangerous political situation. My grandfather came to America from Germany at the age of thirteen to escape being bullied into joining Hitler's brown shirts, the youth version of what became the SS. These boys, who are not small children, but rather almost fully grown men, reminded me too much of the bullies my grandfather described. I would like to encourage the citizens of Ojai to be vigilant and report any incident immediately to the police. Perhaps if these boys experience the negative consequences of their bad behavior via fines in the courts, they will come out of it. But at the same time, don't try to intimidate or be nasty to them. They are also just kids who don't know any better. They deserve our compassion and are really just looking for attention and love, whether they know it or not. I hope we can nip this in the bud before anyone gets seriously hurt or even killed. It will take a village and a motorcycle cop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Sheriff Rivera, Bill Miley and then Karina Wright. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gilman.
Hello, sir.
Council and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to come before we do speak on this subject. My name is Jose Rivera. I'm the Assistant Sheriff for the Sheriff's Office at Overseas Patrol Operations. I'm also a former chief of police here in this beautiful city. I would like to also thank the council for the support that you show my department, my station here, Chief Newman and her staff. It's been wonderful. It was wonderful when I was here and I really enjoyed my time. As one of your prior chiefs, I'm very familiar with the issues related to traffic. Some of the issues that Chief Newman mentioned were some of the issues that I addressed when I was chief here as well. I've spoken to many residents in the city about their concerns, the speeding, the reckless driving with the e-bikes. And it's only going to get worse because obviously we're in a e-bike boom and everybody's out there trying to, trying to get an e-bike. So during the prior meeting, I I do understand there was a comment about education first and enforcement second. There was also some concerns about not wanting to see your neighbors getting pulled over for for a violation. I I get it, but let me talk a little bit about this. So during my tenure here in Ojai, I made numerous educational and social media posts regarding items such as bicycle safety, crosswalk safety and also driving with your cell phone. I'm sure everyone here and everyone in this room and anyone that's listening that drives knows that it's a violation if you blow through a red light, stop sign, if you exceed the speed limit, or if you're on your phone while you're driving. So I I don't think education on that subject matter is really a big concern, but it's those type of violations that we see on a constant basis. And a lot of times it contribute to the accident rate here in the city. So those are real basic laws that we see. Those are basic laws that when you take your driver's test, those are questions that you have to to answer and eventually get right in order for you to get your driver's license. Now, you don't get retested for your driver's license every year or every, every renewal. You pay your fee and you renew your license. So, you know, there's no reason that we should continually ask people, hey, did you know it's a violation to run a stop line or stoplight or a red light? So I I understand in, one of the focuses I tell, because I oversee a total of six stations, one of the focus that I tell the chiefs and a police and my commanders is, I don't need hammers out there. I don't need every time you stop somebody that you issue them a ticket.
Thank you, Sheriff Rivera, and welcome back to Ojai.
Love it here.
Bill Miley, Karina Wright and Tom Francis.
Hello. My email to you has is very supportive of this program and project. But right now, I want to do a role playing of a person who says, oh, no. This is, I would call historical fiction, based on what I've experienced here in Ojai over fifty-seven years. It's a story, fiction. I moved here to have openness and freedom from the rules of the big city. My family says I'm a good driver. I say I'm a good driver, always on the lookout for risky drivers. My dad taught me about California stops when the intersection had no cars. It's okay. An occasional mid-street U-turn, the post office parking is tight. So sometimes I leave my car running in a red zone for a dash with a package. I find traveling thirty miles an hour plus on the angry road, okay, because it's really wide. Older folks may drive really slow and that frustrates the hell out of me. I try to avoid downtown on tourist days. That can be a real mess. Speed limits when no cars are around, hey, that's easy to go beyond. There is no risk to others when nobody's around. Bicycles are a challenge, now especially electric bikes. There is, I pay taxes for roads, but they don't. A three to six-foot distance from bicycles is unfair and confusing. Remember, I moved here to get away from big city congestive rules. Keep our city free of stifling motor vehicle, street enforcement, but always practice defensive driving for bad drivers. Trust in yourself. Please remember, this is just a story. Please remember, this is just a story that I made up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Karina Wright, Tom Francis, and Lori, Lori Segmond.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Hi.
Thank you, Chief, for the staff report on this. Um, I am really disappointed to see this traffic motor cop on the agenda again after the City Council already voted no for it last summer. In consideration that it is on the agenda again for a vote, I would really urge you and ask you to consider the entire police budget of this town, since it's over four million dollars, and to add over three hundred and sixty thousand more dollars to it as a line item, I think, uh, is not really reviewing the entire budget and taking into account everything that we're doing in terms of spending money on the police force. So, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's seven thousand dollars a week, if you do the math, slightly more. And I think an expense of this size really should give us all pause and reconsider the police budget overall. It's good news to hear that it might not be an ongoing expense, but if it is, it's obviously going to increase. And, you know, since I've been thinking about this for the last few months, I've done a lot of research. And, you know, like the stats that Chief Newman has put forth about accidents, I have found studies that also show that high rates of traffic stops have no significant reduction in, uh, crash rates. I've also done research that shows that, um, uh, more ticketing does not translate to a significant long-term reduction in speeding rates. But we do know that it does lead to disproportionate impacts on certain demographics, especially marginalized people, and, uh, you know, racial profiling, et cetera. So, I encourage alternative methods, speed monitors, other calming methods, that will give us a little extra money. We can put that money towards improving our quality of life, maybe provide recreational opportunities for these teenagers, give them a place to go pop wheelies over in a vacant lot, give more money to the arts, so we can have after-school programs in arts, give more grants, and I would really hope that you would please consider this enormous price tag before just agreeing to this line item expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Tom Francis, Lori Segmond, and Craig Gam Gardner. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Gilman and Council. Thank you for your service. Two hundred and forty-eight members of this community signed under a letter asking the council to vote no on the proposal to hire a motorcycle officer for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. These citizens did not just say no to another cop, they also supported an education-first, data-driven enforcement-second alternative approach that costs a lot less and has far greater promise in convincing all drivers, Ojai locals and visitors alike, to take it slow in driving our streets. Mayor Gilman, you ran on a platform that included a promise to truly listen to our community and consider all views. Though I understand that our local law enforcement representative, with all due respect, Ms. Newman, has asserted that hiring a motorcycle officer is the best way to improve traffic safety in our community, many of us who live here disagree and want this council to first try out a less costly and potentially more effective approach to increasing safety on our streets. Mayor Gilman, please allow this approach due consideration by voting no or finding something to say on the vote other than yes. Obviously, e-bikes have become very popular, and though most kids are mildly mischievous but ride reasonably safe, sadly, there's a small handful of bad actors that are scaring community members with their antics. But the behavior of the bad actors must be addressed. We must not go from very little traffic law enforcement to a motorcycle cop enforcing against all kids, including the large group that mostly follow the rules. We must instead put our arms around our, our young people and express gratitude to them for riding e-bikes as they are getting where they need to go pollution-free in a climate-conscious fashion and without their parents clogging up our roads by giving them rides in cars. Also for getting off their screens and getting outdoors, blowing off steam, and having fun and building their coordination and sense of balance. It would be a real shame if we repeat the historical cultural blunder of criminalizing skateboarding, and then after seeking law enforcement on our young people, finally figuring out how to provide them a skate park, which gave skateboarders a place to engage in their sport of choice while not impacting the community. Pickleballers needed a space, and they were gifted seven hundred thousand dollars' worth of new courts to support their sport of choice. So far, the only thing proposed for our young and rambunctious e-bikers is to enforce against them to the tune of approximately fifteen hundred dollars a working day for a motorcycle officer to potentially engage in cat and mouse with e-bikers while missing a real opportunity to embrace and work with our children on real solutions. Clearly, we have some work to do to accommodate this new form of transportation and sport called e-biking. Beginning with heavy-handed criminalization is not the answer, treating e-bikers as individuals rather than some sort of mass threat is what we need to do. Please vote no on the cop, take a step back and work with your community to come up with real solutions that honor and respect our small-town culture and provide a more thoughtful, measured, and well-articulated approach to traffic safety. We are ready to roll up our sleeves and work on this. Are you? Very quickly, District One, the letter against it, forty-five signatures.
Thank you, please, please conclude. Yep. Thank you. I'm, I am paying attention, Mr. Francis. Um, Lori Segmond, Craig Gardner, and Joe McDonald. Hello.
Uh, I'm here to express my, uh, complete support for the motorcycle, uh, officer. One thing, um, I'm not so sure about, and I don't know if I can ask the question, or maybe it could be addressed during discussion, is, um, the fines for motor vehicle code violation. Um, I guess the funds and the, the revenue that's collected, I don't know how much of that might offset the cost of an officer, or, you know, what, what the rate of return is on that. But I, I would like to hear that, if that could be addressed. Um, I'd also like to know, um, you spoke to it a little bit, Chief Newman, about whether we have any data from other municipalities in the county to know of just how successful or what kind of improvement was shown. Kind of had a question, kind of a practical question, what happens when it rains? Uh, the officer may be gonna do education. If it's too hot, you know, I don't know if it has a little air conditioning unit, you know, or they can park in the shade, but, but those are the extremes, I think about stuff like that. Um, I, I can't, um, say enough about the great comments that Bill Miley wrote in his email, I did read through those, so I, I just wanna say ditto, he, he nailed it. And Larry Steingold as well, because, um, unlike Larry, I don't, I don't bike around town, but I walk a lot, I drive a lot. And I, I happen to live right at the intersection where Ventura Street, um, uh, Montgomery and Creek Road kind of starts. And there was a traffic calming measure put in place there, uh, a few years ago, and I, at Saddle Lane. And because I travel that way frequently, I could, you could make so much money ticketing people that blow those stop signs. And, and I know they're local people, you know? So, um, with regard to e-bikes, it's out of control. I, I walk at Nordoff High School and in that neighborhood, um, at Sarzody Park, and I've called for service a few times because of out-of-control kids tearing up the turf at the high school, at the park. You know, terrorizing kids playing, people walking their dogs yelling at me for being in their way, I'm walking my dog, hello. Um, so I, I fully support it, and we've got to get it under control. And, you know, enforcement, that has to be one of the three principles that Chief Newman brought up, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Ms. Edman. Um, Mr. Alameda, kid, do you happen to know where fees go for traffic violations?
Uh, yeah, I address a couple of the items I heard come up on that topic. If I can find my, my notes here. First, just on the expenditure side, this city does receive funding from the state. It's under the state, uh, law enforcement, um, supplemental block grant. And these funds can only be used for additional services, so additive services, so they're kind of tough money to use. They can't supplant your baseline service, so definitely on the, uh, grant side, we, we have funding from the state we already receive. Um, any fines collected do come back to the city, in part, the county does, um, take a portion, but that's also an offsetting one. Um, so, both good. Having gone through this before, I'm a huge fan of the contract model. You can bring on services as needed, um, with the county, it's great. Having done a motor officer before, they're highly visible in the community. They tend to be really well-known in the community, just by the fact they're out in the open.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and also, Ojai kind of being on an island, from a public safety standpoint, it's a nice add, because if you do have an event requiring immediate response, the ability of a motor officer to get there is substantially faster than someone in a Tahoe.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Craig Gardner, Joe McDonald, and Brad Smith.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, and we're gonna draw my, uh, comments mainly to the, the e-bike and enforcement. I would, uh, strongly discourage any utilization of it specifically attributed.
Or just, yeah, closer to the microphone, thank you, sir.
I would discourage the use of a traffic officer specifically for the purpose of basically criminalizing, uh, child behavior. It's fourteen-year-olds, like, they age out, once they get cars, they stop engaging in that type of behavior. It is, um, to some of the other points, I mean, we want to encourage the people to be off their screens, out engaging, you know, the community, whether people have issues with how they're engaging in the community, I think that's an issue for, quite frankly, the village and, you know, addressing with their parents and/or their, you know, whatever their parental, um, involvement in that. Um, and then, be quite frank, I think it's kind of offensive, like, when there's even a discussion about, uh, you know, being, you know, uh, money-making endeavor to offset the costs of this, because, um, I wanna say, traffic cops are kind of like beavers. So, if you, beavers, if you put them in an area, they build dams. If you have traffic officers, they find violations, and it seems to be a perverse incentive to, um, have a revenue sharing or something along those lines, I think it gives a different incentive structure um, than if the real incentive is to, you know, public safety, you know, enforcement, or whatever, uh, the basis for that is. Um, and then, I think, it sounds like it's a data issue, so, like, I would encourage maybe some alternative, uh, collection of data. I know they have, you know, LPRs, block systems, things like that, or other types of, uh, basis to get that information, to make informed decisions. Um, and then, kind of, my last point is, I understand there are other communities that do have a licensing, uh, system for, um, I just know for normal bikes, like, I know, um, Long Beach, New York, I remember specifically, they have, you have to have a license plate on your bike. Um, I'm not saying something along those lines, but I think it would be appropriate for anybody under eighteen years old um, that's utilizing one of these types of, uh, e-bike systems, um, to need to have some kind of licensing. That could, you know, quite frankly, be, you know, machine-readable by, you know, some type of system. Um, and I know that I, myself, I love riding around on my e-bike, 'cause, you know, one, I don't have to take up a parking spot at Westridge. You know, I can get right in there, I can get whatever I need to do, and I can go back, and I know there's maybe some members of the council that may have, you know, uh, an Onyx RCR that may not be necessarily a class one, two, or three, I'm not asking anybody to out themselves. But I don't believe those are class one, two, or three, uh, electric bikes, 'cause I think they're seventy-two volts and go over twenty-eight miles an hour. But, um, so that's what I think, it's, I think we need to encourage that behavior, um, just, uh, utilizers in the.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, appreciate it. Joe McDonald, Brad Smith, and Star Child.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, I fully support efforts to improve street safety. I believe interactive speed monitoring signs are a more effective solution than hiring a motorcycle officer. These signs strategically placed throughout Ojai offer continuous protection rather than intermittent enforcement. For a one-time investment of, of less than a third of the three hundred and sixty thousand per year ongoing cost of a motorcycle officer, interactive speed signs installed at multiple locations throughout town would perform two functions. First, they would display speed of travel to educate approaching drivers, and second, they would collect speed of travel for every vehicle that passes by. Uh, these signs would not take photos, capture license plate numbers, or any other identifying information. Uh, let me share three compelling reasons why this approach makes sense. First, these signs work around the clock, providing twenty-four-seven speed reduction. Studies show that they reduce speed by ten to twenty percent. One officer working forty hours per week can only monitor one location at a time for about twenty-five percent of the week. Second, these signs collect valuable data that helps us understand traffic patterns and identify problem areas. This means we can make informed decisions about where and when to focus additional enforcement efforts, maximizing the impact of our existing police resources. And third, this approach builds community trust. Unlike traditional enforcement, which can sometimes create tension, interactive speed signs are, serve as a neutral reminders that help drivers self-correct without confrontation. I know unsafe, unsafe e-bike use is also an issue that needs to be dealt with, and one idea of, uh, for this is city-issued e-bike placards, which would create a simple yet effective system of accountability for the growing number of e-bikes on our streets. And just as cars have license plates that help identify reckless drivers, visible placards would allow community members to report dangerous riding behavior. Like interactive speed signs that encourage drivers to self-regulate, a placard system creates natural accountability for the e-bikers. I urge you to invest in this proven cost-effective technology rather than adding another officer. It's a solution that works continuously, builds community trust, and allows us to invest funds in other crucial areas of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate it. Brad Smith, and then Star Child. Hello, Mr. Smith. Hi.
My name is Brad Smith, I live over here on Blanche Street. Y'all know me from a different matter. I'm a hiker. One of the joys I have is walking out my front door with a backpack on and walking up to Nordoff Tower. I just love it. You know, we have coyotes, we've got rattlesnakes, we've got bears, we even have mountain lions along the way. And you know the most dangerous part of my hike? Is crossing the avenue in the yellow-signed crosswalk. I cross at Blanche, I cross at Kenyatta, I cross Ventura Street, and I wait until the car's gonna have a break. I don't just squat and push the button and make the yellow lights flash, I wait until there's a break. And I probably do this, uh, ten to twelve times a week, between my hiking and other events that I do here in town. And I can't tell you the number of times that people blow through those crosswalks, smiling and waving as they do. I know it's funny, but a woman has died in the crosswalk at Blanche. Not immediately, but subsequent to that. Do we have a problem with e-bikes? Yeah, we do. Are they the same as skateboards? Not really, skateboarders never took over the downtown. Is speeding an issue? Yeah, it is. Major cause of accidents. Not just in town, but countrywide. I'm in strong support of a motorcycle officer. They can be flexible, and they don't need to be a hammer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Star Child.
When I saw the wage or the, that, that the motorcycle cop would earn, I wondered why it was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I see that it's sectioned out, that there's some money for special training, some money for salary, and some money for special equipment. But I think it's important to know which each of those figures are, because if the one motorcycle, my motorcycle officer leaves the force, would we then need to repay for the special training? Also, I wondered why not a car? Um, I've heard some good arguments for the motorcycle cop, perhaps it's a bit faster to get to places. Perhaps they can be in the arbolada in a way that's sort of not in the road. One issue that was brought up, I think, is true, you know, what if it rains, what happens when it's too hot? Another thing I'm wondering is, how much cost savings could we get if we had an extra patrol car versus the extra motorcycle? I know that a car is more expensive than a motorcycle, but it doesn't require that special training, which. but it doesn't require that special training, which could end up being a recurring fee if different officers need, need to have that special training. Um, the last thing I wanted to say is I hope that council doesn't lose sight of some of the other uh road safety um strategies we could take. Uh, one is the twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit throughout the city. Another is a lighted crosswalk between Libby Park and Arcade. Another is the intersection between the library and Westridge is so very dark. Um, I've crossed there and uh a woman came, almost hit me, rolled down the window and said, "I'm so sorry, I just can't see. It's so dark." And I, I didn't blame her. Uh, it was that dark. Um, the last thing that I think has been forgotten in, in Ojai is the need for sidewalks. We talked about the one traffic fatality in Lyon um when uh Dr. Wayland, who was in his motor scooter, uh was struck and was killed uh when he was in the bike lane. But why was he in the bike lane? Because at that section, at Grand and Lyon, the, the um sidewalk disappears. It's just not built out. And um, so the one way that we can help pedestrians is by making it so they can go on the sidewalk and not have to be in the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Mr. Montgomery, anybody online?
Yes, Mayor. We have one raised hand from Nicholas. Nicholas, you have the floor. Nicholas, your hand is raised. There you are.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hello. My name is Nick Hyde-Smith. I'm an Ojai resident for twenty-six years. I'm against assigning a full-time motorcycle officer to the city. In two thousand and two, the city appointed a motorcycle officer named Officer Thomas Triplet. The concept was not a success, and his position was made redundant in two thousand and five. Let's not repeat and make a costly mistake. Also, I'd like to address also the uh things I'm hearing about the crosswalks. I'd just like to um say, the other night, I was returning from Domino's Pizza and I almost hit somebody at Montgomery. And I was only doing fifteen miles an hour. Luckily, the person just stepped out from the dark and I could just saw him in time. So I think engineering controls would be a much better solution to the problems that we've got. Maybe even putting in a fifteen mile-an-hour speed limit through the city. But um, I think engineering controls would be a much better solution to that problem. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, we have one more raised hand from Anita.
Great.
Anita, you can unmute and you have the floor. Anita, I see you've unmuted. Anita, we can't hear you here. We give you just one last call. Must be a tech issue.
Okay.
And we'll have to move on, Mayor.
Okay. That's the end of the public comments. Um, is Anita muted again? Oh, well, anyway. Okay. Um, yeah, I see the hands raised.
Yes.
Oh, she's got, okay. So if I might offer um how, I'd love to, I do wanna hear from my colleagues. Um, we did talk about this before. Um, being someone who was raised here and learned to drive here, um, in hindsight, I do appreciate all the police officers that were here. And as soon as we turned and, and drove past the Y, we didn't even go twenty-seven because the police seemed to have nothing better to do than pull us over and so on. But um, I do have that experience. What I, what I thought leaving the conversation as an audience member was the people in the room who were involved in this traffic enforcement antiquity that had the experience all wanted a traffic officer here. And I listened to them very carefully. So I'm all for, all for education and all for engineering. And luckily, if we vote on something like this, it's not either or, and it never, never would be. It would always be something that we would add. And, and Ms. Newman, I appreciate you offering this contract that we can look at and keep evaluating and look at the data. And um, so, and another thing that I will mention is um, you will hear next week, I think somebody will probably bring up a twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit as a new action item that we can take up. Um, and some, you know, those kinds of things, I think, will be on the table. So it's not either or. And then finally, I've asked um Ms. Newman at, that when we look at the next budget, that we do look carefully at the sheriff's item because it is the single biggest item and it's, it's enormous. And we should be looking at those things, kind of responding to Mr. Wirick's concerns. So with that, um, I'm, I do feel very strongly that this will be that third prong that's brought up as something that we can use. And it's not to vilify anybody, but it's to prevent somebody else from getting killed. That's my main concern here. So um, I, I'm happy to put a motion out, but I don't wanna do anything prematurely before I hear from my colleagues.
I do have a question.
Please.
This goes back to um the comment that Mr. Alameda made, that we can, you know, take the contract, and if we need more service, we can add to it. You know, can we also dial it back? In other words, if we, you know, decide that we would like to have less of a motorcycle officer presence six months from now. Um, is that something, or are we locked in at some minimum level of service for the length of the contract?
Thoughts?
And that maybe, maybe
Yeah, that's probably a better question for Trina.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't wanna prematurely answer just yes, but we can be flexible. However, you do have to consider that you are spending money to train this individual to perform those duties. Um, and that would be what they're implemented for. So you would be spending money to train them, to purchase the equipment. It's not cheap to purchase equipment. Sorry, I don't know what's going on with my mic. I think I'm too close. Um, so there is an investment upfront um that you would wanna consider when, how long you would wanna implement this for. But generally speaking, yes, we could be flexible. Um, you know, I mentioned before, we would be um amenable to doing a year trial, but if for some reason we got into this and you realized it wasn't working, um, then you as the city council could decide that you wanted to dissolve that, then that would be your choice. Hopefully, we wouldn't, hopefully, we would make a more positive impact, and that wouldn't be the case. But generally speaking, yes.
Mm-hmm.
If I could just add on
Yeah, please.
Oftentimes, 'cause you are hiring a forty-hour-a-week position, there are arrangements where you potentially could share services if you had to take her with a neighboring city, or even not incorporated county area as well. So there are options.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, so I think you all know how I feel about this. Um, I was one who voted against this the first time. And I, I wanna clarify a couple of things that I said at that last meeting. One, I do think it's important that we hold people accountable when they're breaking the law. And so that's very, very important. I also am very concerned about safety. Um, I, I just feel that, that the issue of safety, it, that, that the issue of safety has more to do with how we are handling crosswalks and the lighting on the main streets, which goes into Caltrans. I, I just think that it's, that, that looking at this in a holistic way and not just hiring, spending all of this money to hire a motor- motorcycle officer, I, I just think that we need a more comprehensive approach. And I also think that uh, that, that, you know, Bill Wirick brought up some, some things that I had not considered. And so that also is uh causing me to, to, to take pause. The four hundred and sixty-six dollars per capita, um, the, the, looking at our contracts, I, I think we need to take a step back and look at this from all different perspectives before we just go to enforcement. Because statistically, there, I mean, there are, there's research that shows that, that enforcement doesn't address the long-term concerns of reducing speed and improving safety. And there tends to be a disproportionate number of people who are disadvantaged, who are being pulled over. Um, and uh, and so, uh, and so I'm, I'm just, so I am not in support of this. And I don't think I will have the majority of the vote. And so I was wondering, if we do move forward with this, is there a way for either party to, to put into the contract that either party can, can, uh, can concede at will? Can pull, can cancel the con- I'm sorry, cancel the contract? If we get into it and it's proving to be disruptive for some reason?
Uh, uh, again, you know, I, I would say generally speaking, yes, but you also have to understand you're making it if you agreed to do it, you're making an investment at the forefront. And you would want to at least see it through to make, to see if it is having an impact in the city. And you cannot do that within six months. I, I, I would say that, like, a year, that's why we would suggest a year. Um, and we would come back with monthly reports to identify and show you what that position has been doing and addressing and, and make sure that we have data to show you. That way, at the end of that year, you would be able to decide whether or not it's addressing the issues that you wanted it to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm wondering with the um motorcycle officer that was brought in, do you have the statistics of, you know, how many tickets he wrote, what they were for, and how many hours he was here a week or month or whatever?
I don't, because that was so long ago. I can, I can try to do research to see if we have that, but you know, I, it was back in two thousand and one.
You mean the one, the person
The one that's
The one that's periodically
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were meant to
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, wait, I got a ticket not too long
Yes.
He's been here.
Yes.
Yeah, so if we could get that information as well, just to see?
Yes.
Well, do you have any even anecdotal information? That's probably the, something you would, do you, I mean, I know of an anecdote, which was there was an, there was someone on an e-bike that was riding on the wrong side of the street, went across the crosswalk at Montgomery. There happened to be the motorcycle officer who stopped this young man and called the mom who came. And the kid was nervous, he, you know, and let him go. And then they got a thumbs up in the Ojai Valley News. There's an anecdote. But um, I'm not saying that's the end-all-be-all, but do you have any data at all from the periodic officer who's been here?
So we do have data. We do have, we keep track of how many citations they write, how many hours they do work here. But because it's so sporadic, we, and they, they come when they have days off in their schedule from other stations. So that happens to be on Mondays. So not every traffic accident occurs on Mondays. Not every, you know, speeder comes through on Monday. So it's difficult to tell you whether or not their time spent up here is addressing all of our needs in terms of traffic safety, because they're only here certain hours on certain days. Um, but yes, I can get you information as to the hours, the citations that they write, how many they write when they have worked up here thus far.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I've, I've got a few um just comments to make. And I, I've, you know, I've been vocally in favor of doing this um a- as a way of, you know, finally addressing what I think is a real safety need in the community. Um, and I've received a lot of public feedback, uh, you know, more than anything, is that traffic is a number-one concern of our residents. Um, but I am, you know, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about where we are budget-wise. Um, it, and that's enhanced by the idea that uh, you know, the state was looking, you know, good a, a year or so ago, and then they've had to pull back a lot of their funding. And, you know, we're looking at potential wholesale funding, uh, uh, reduction of funding if it's coming from the federal government. Um, but this, you know, so I'm struggling with whether this amount around, you know, around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is potentially gonna break us as opposed to, you know, I, I think it's one of the best things that we could invest in now to, to make what I understand to be the community viewpoint on this. Um, I do wanna agree with the mayor that this is not an either-or type of a measure. There, you know, we're, we're not gonna hire a traffic officer and then ignore every other methodology of reducing uh or improving traffic safety. I also think that the comments about our overall police budget and uh the need to do a deeper dive and an analysis of that is, is important. And I also think that um one of the topics that's come up a bunch is, you know, Measure C and how we're using that money. And I think it's very much worthwhile to, to dig into, okay, how has it been spent over the last few years? And, and, and how do we wanna direct that spending? Um, but overall, uh, I'm making, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna support this because I think it is a big public safety measure. And I'll echo, I guess, you know, what Larry Stein Gold said, is if you use our streets, you see deplorable traffic safety behaviors. And I don't know how that's ever gonna change unless we um have an officer who can, you know, catch that and deter it.
Mr. Alameda, you mentioned that there were some particular grants that we could tap into for extra services. Is there a dollar amount range on that, just so we are aware of it?
Yeah, so, so currently in the annual budget for this current year, we have allocation from the state's about two hundred thousand. So this is, it's a rolling uh funding source. So what you get in dollar, you get a dollar year one, you have to spend by year three.
Okay.
So we use it to the extent that we can, uh, but there is some residual funds there. So that's the state supplemental law enforcement grant. Um, again, it can't be applied towards your baseline services. Therefore, additive measures that you have expanded, those might be technology improvements, um, improvements in equipment. But definitely, um, the addition of an officer would be more than
What is left, would you say? I, I'm not gonna hold
Uh, on the fund balance, off the top of my head, I, I wouldn't know, but it's reasonable to probably allocate a good, a minimum thirty thousand, if not more.
Okay.
And that's definitely an open source that we have now.
Ms. Rul, do you have anything that you wanna add?
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to follow up with um Mr. Alameda. Um, so if you get it in year one, you have to spend it in year three, by year three, where are we in that? Curious.
Um, we've been able to spend it down where we aren't losing funds in year three.
And, and you can go back for year two to spend in year, you can go back in year two to spend in year four?
You can go, it's a rolling three-year window. So
Okay, so you just
You got a hundred thousand dollars in year one, a hundred and fifty in year two, or in year three, you'd have to spend at least a hundred thousand
Right, got it.
At the end of year three.
Okay. Um, so, so that uh was interesting. Um, so I'm assuming, not that we're not spending the money wisely, but any that we get, we could say goes to the motorcycle cop as opposed to?
Correct. And, and one of the other items that was brought up is you do have in your budget you adopted was looking at implementing the block system, which is not in enforcement, not speeding. It has to do with picking up vehicles that have warrants or warrants uh in the community.
Okay. Um, okay, so I, I am in support of this. Um, uh, and, and I was last time. I, I, I think if we give the proper training, we're not, we're not looking to bring the hammer down on kids. We are looking to educate them um and to let them know that eyes, you know, there are eyes on them. Um, and I think they need to know that. I have seen them tear up the turf at Sarzati. Um, you know, there's no eyes on them. So I, I, and I, I also don't really, I, I don't feel the idea of profiling. I think that's more training that we can give. Um, we don't accept that in Ojai. Uh, it's not okay. Uh, it's not okay. The numbers that we get would, would tell us whether or not that's actually happening. I don't feel, and I know that I am not a disadvantaged, so I understand that. But I don't feel like that's what we're really talking about here. What we're talking about here is street safety. And all of us who, you know, walk the streets of Ojai know it is not safe. And it is a lot of the idea of people, you know, they go through stop signs, they go through red lights, they make U-turns, all those things that, that to point, they know they shouldn't be doing. So, you know, I, I'm in support of it for all the reasons that we've said. I certainly don't think that it's an either/or. I think it would be money well-spent. I think we're fine if we commit for a year. I wouldn't think that we should, that we should draw back. Like, I, I don't foresee there being these huge problems that we have to say, boom, we're gonna stop. So I, I think we should commit to a year unless, you know, something catastrophic happens, so that we really can get a sense of how this is working. I'm in support of it. It's not an either/or. We need to educate the kids, but we also need to have some sort of authority figure saying, we're educating you. I, I definitely believe that. And so this, I, I think this would do it. I trust, uh, the chief to make sure that that training and that understanding on how this motorcycle cop works in our community, um, is clear. And God knows, we'll have enough eyes on them. I mean, probably enough videos too. So I'm in support of it.
Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
Okay, I, I move to accept the traffic officer contract for a one-year period.
I second.
Can I make a friendly amendment? That we add a, a term in the, in the contract that either party can cancel at will? If something is not working out?
May I suggest that we have the option to negotiate with that? I just, I have some concerns that we would wanna address cuz there's a human attached to this contract. There may be some other rights and issues, but it, it's something that we can definitely negotiate towards with the sheriff's department, if you're okay with that.
So it's a, it's a standard provision in the services contract that you, either side, would have terms of withdrawal, but there, there usually are conditions attached with the withdrawal.
Okay.
To further that, if we can get to the point where we can just release, that's the goal, but there, like, Councilmember Whitman said there may be other conditions that we need to put on it in order to do that. So just giving us the flexibility to do that.
So are you accepting the friendly amendment?
What, what's the amendment?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Would you have a suggestion on what would be added? If anything?
It's usually a year contract. Typically, there's a notice provision of how many days you get. Worst-case scenario, if you're eight months in, you wanna withdraw, you're buying it out. So you can, there's, there's ways to certainly get out of it. But usually these contracts, 90-day notice.
Well, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, uh, Ms. Newman say that we're having an upfront cost, which does not mean the same thing as we should do it if we're not happy with it. It should never mean that. But, um, I hope that we would all come to the table saying it's not working. And even if it means we've spent a lot upfront, we would not continue if it was not working. Yes, sir. Give us the short version. Thank you, sir.
Hey, if, if at some point you, you realize this is not working out for you, I don't want you guys spending any more money on this. Regarding the position, I can absorb that back into my patrol, uh, uh, one of the patrol stations. So it's just.
Thank you.
I, I, I wish you would just give it a year to see if it makes a difference in the traffic accidents, the complaints that you see. But as far as the position itself, the body, don't worry about that. I can absorb it into another assignment.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Just, um, I would also, if, if we're having real problems, I think we come to the table with Chief Newman. And we say, you know, we need to, we need to reconfigure how we're doing this. I mean, I, I think that in any time what things emerge that you didn't foresee, and you come to the table and you talk about it. So I don't think it has, I, I would never assume it would have to be a full-blown, sorry, um, this didn't work for us. But rather, these are some things we have concerns about. And I have no doubt that, uh, Deputy Sheriff, Chief Sheriff, no.
Assistant Sheriff.
Assistant Chief Sheriff, um, you know, would also, you know, could be part of that as well as with, uh, Chief Newman here. So, um, that's what I feel would probably be the way that would go anyway.
I think that's right. So.
So I, I'd like to add a potential amendment. This might not be the right time, but I, I think it fits, which is that in addition to the contract, we authorize the contract that we ask staff to come back to us with a thorough report on our sheriff's budget overall. And that we ask them also to come back with a report on, uh, Measure C and, you know, the spending issues associated.
I might suggest they're, they're not related and, and that I'm hoping we're gonna ask for those two things when we approve the next budget, or even work on the next budget. If you feel they need to be attached, but I'm expecting that too, or wanting that.
I just wanna say that, that in spending the $350,000 here, we are also making a statement about what we are not spending money on. And we're gonna, and I know we have other agenda items to talk about, but we hear over and over again about all the things that people want to spend money on, want us as a city to spend money on to make Ojai a, a, a great place to live, for activities for our kids, more arts grants. And so in spending this money, this is a huge, we spend, what, 30% of our budget, 40, 40%, we spend so much money on policing here. And that means that we're not doing a whole lot of things that would really benefit the community. So my hesitation in voting in support of this has to do with those, with those considerations.
I support what you're saying, and I would like us to, this is gonna come up in two weeks. You already know, cuz I've mentioned this publicly, but I'm very interested in having a very large increase in our, in our arts grants. So again, I'm not thinking it's either/or, and I get where you're coming from. But I'm also eager to spend money in those ways. And luckily, we're in a very generous situation right now with our budget, that we can look at those things. May I call for a, a vote here?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mayor Gilman with a second by Mayor Ruhl to approve item two as recommended for a one-year agreement.
Thank you. Yes?
Roll call. Councilmember Ruhl?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayng?
No.
Mayor Protem Ling?
No.
Mayor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
10-minute break.
Just to let you know, um, Ms. Francina, um, was reconsidering her no vote very, very, very seriously and, and walked away thinking, um, very, very, uh, whatever you call it. Undecided, hesitant, yeah, so anyway.
Well, it's okay, the vote's over.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
On the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good day.
Oh, let's ask her a question. Excuse me, Ms. Anderson.
No, that's perfect, it's wonderful. All right. We are on item three, the Arts Grants Award for 2024, 2025. Do we have everyone? Yes, okay. Wonderful, so let's start with a staff report. Mr. Ringer? Oh, yes, sorry.
I'm gonna make a quick comment, but then I'm gonna abstain.
Ah, okay.
I wanna make a quick comment first because I was at, I was the liaison for the Arts Commission.
Yep.
When they went through the process, they were using to make sure that their process was fair.
Yep.
And, uh, I was very impressed with how detailed it was and how many levels. So I just wanna, you know, add that for the record. But I've got multiple family members that would receive.
Yep.
I mean, they're not my direct family, but I'm.
Understood.
Siblings and nieces and all that.
I'm hearing you say you are in favor of the process and you're abstaining.
I support the process.
Okay.
I don't wanna make any.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Mr. Ringer?
Thank you and good evening. I'm here today to discuss the, uh, 2024, 25, uh, Arts Grants Awards from the city of Ojai, with recommendations from the, uh, Arts Commission. A little bit about the, uh, Arts Grants Program. This dates back to 1985, uh, and has been one of the major responsibilities to the Arts Commission. With that, uh, the grant cycle opened this year, uh, on August 28th, 2024. Uh, we continued the grant cycle for roughly one month, uh, ending the submission period at September 30th. In that timeframe, we had 19 applications. The applicants were also invited to the commission to present their projects on October 17th. They provided a brief overview and also the commission formed an ad hoc committee, which also assisted with the recommendations. The ad hoc committee consisted of the Grants Commissioner, which would be Commissioner Wright, Brett Bradigan, Nigel Chisholm, Julie Grist, and Sammy Zaringer. They provided their recommendations to the commission. The commission reviewed those and made their additional recommendation. That would be on November 21st, 2024. And the recipients are listed in Attachment A for the council's review. And recommendation is to ratify the City of Ojai Arts Commission's funding recommendations for the 2024 Arts Grants Program. Alternative options would be take no action or to provide an alternate direction for the staff. Fiscal impact on this, they, we have stuck within the budget allocation of $30,000, which is in the city's approved budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Ringer? Yes.
I have a couple about this. Okay, so just with some of the recipients. Because the, first of all, I appreciate everything that when, I know this is like probably a bit, a lot you guys put into it, so thank you for that. But when it says that it's to, the grant is to benefit those in the City of Ojai, and I noticed that a couple of these are not in the city, like the Happy Valley Foundation and Taft Gardens. So those are out of the city, so I just wanted to know how that hap- explanation.
We, all the recommendations were made through the commission. The commission has thoroughly vetted these. I don't have an answer to that.
I can offer you, I can offer an answer.
Or she's raising.
I know, we're gonna have, we'll have you come up, but I can, well, please, no, fill in, fill in, yeah.
These grants are offered to Ojai City and Ojai Valley.
I was just gonna fill in to say, many of the arts organizations that we have, like the, the art, the Artist Tour, people that are at the Ojai Valley Arts, these are people that do not all live in the city, but it's something that our community, our city and our valley benefit from.
So in the other, in more information, is it stated in that and this just is something that could be added? Because this just says, it's just a simple fix. Sorry.
In the press release that goes out before the application opens, we invite residents of Ojai City and the surrounding municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
And even if you're in Ventura, but you happen to have your studio in Ojai, you know? So it's for broader reach.
Thank you.
So it, under number, it's page three dash seven, and it says, "Impacts Upon the Quality of Life in the City of Ojai and the Ojai Valley Under Individual Artist Arts Grant and Arts Organization's Criteria." So I've always understood it to be our, our sphere of influence.
Yeah, usually it's the Ojai sphere of influence. It's in the Ojai Artist Studio Tour. Usually extends out the side of the city's limits as well.
Any other questions? Let's hear the public comments. So far, all I have is Bill Miley. Get up here. Don't start his timer till he gets to the podium, okay? Hello.
What's the subject?
We could just have a bar stool up there for you and then, anyway.
Yeah, or eventually a wheelchair. Okay, Arts Grants Awards. I read the stated eligibility requirements, the criteria set by the Arts Commission, the historical award charts, twice reviewed the proposed awardees. I did not identify the seven who were not recommended. Wow, impressive range of endeavors in various forms of art. Without art, what's left in Ojai to drive our historical value? A lot, but not enough. Art equates, Ojai equates art. Art in the firms we are evaluating doesn't produce itself. The valley and its natural structures is art, just as it was before people arrived. It's day-to-day, day-to-day environmental changes create new art, as I see it. The cost of staying in Ojai, surviving in Ojai, and hopefully thriving in Ojai keeps edging up and over time leaping up. An awards program of $30,000 is nice. Recognizing the totality of Ojai's art community and its diverse practices and futures could mean a needed values review of the character and quality of support for future award events. Maybe, just look at the percent of our general fund. It's about two tenths of one percent for awards. How about an exercise of exploration to consider what art adds to the overall Ojai effect? You know, why do tourists come here? How many of them come for the art as a principle? And imagine what an additional one tenth of one percent plus, each was $30,000, in art awards would accomplish to enriching the edges of Ojai, Ojai's art community. And I like the idea of a state-of-art study here as part of the general plan update, economic and tourism sectors. We need to recognize and support the art in Ojai and in the valley better than we do now, so that it becomes a significant part of our brand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Mayor, we only.
Go ahead.
Mayor, we only have one, we only have one Zoom participant, but we'll ask them if they would like to raise their hand for item three, Arts Grants. No hand raising and we'll move on.
Smitty, do you, were you about to get up to say something? Oh, wonderful. Well, let me, I would, I'm going to make a motion and I'm happy to hear discussion. I would like to make a motion that we ratify the City of Arts Commission Funding Recommendations for 2024-2025.
I'll second it.
Anything more to say?
No, I just wanted to point out that I think that Chair West's, Chair Smitty's idea about a creative economy and also Bill's point, the economic diversification. And I, I think would be a very good thing to, to move forward towards also supporting the artists that, you know, potentially with work lives spaces and things like that.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I, I support this. I, I'm, you know, thank you very much for all the work that you did. It looks great. The process was attested as, you know, a really fair and process, so, yeah.
Wonderful. I, I suspect that in two weeks, when we have our goal setting, you will see an arts focus, a cultural focus as one of our top priorities. So it's something we care a lot about. Yeah, great. Roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitman has recused.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Beautiful, amazing.
And congratulations to all the winners. Amazing art talent in this community.
Now they get to have their money. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
Mr. Whitman, if you can hear us, or, okay.
He's left the house.
Super. Yes, okay, great. We are on item, onto item four, Fiscal Year 2024-25 Midyear Budget Review.
I know that this is probably not gonna be popular, but this is a deep dive and I just, I don't feel cognitively able to follow it.
Okay.
So I, I don't know exactly what that means. I know that Ms. Greer has been, been hanging out. But it's.
I, I would say we, we, we would not be able to squeeze it in in two weeks from now. That's got a full plate. We could also start something. We could start it and continue if we don't finish.
Okay. I mean, I just, I just wanna say my brain is tired.
Yeah.
I, and I wanna comment.
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm sorry. You know, every, every once in a while, we get something on a Friday and we're expected to understand it by Tuesday. And I, you know, this, this is the comment I was gonna make earlier tonight, but I'd like to see us identify certain types of matters that we're gonna get more than three days to review because it's not just the issue of tonight. It's the issue of being able to dig into individual items. And I know that Councilmember Mang has some thoughts also and, and, you know, she and I have talked about it and, you know, she might be able to. Well, I'm, I would support the idea that we continue this so that we can, we can all do a deep analysis of what's in the budget. And, and then, you know, I think there's a bunch of questions that could potentially be asked and answered, you know, informally, and then it wouldn't end up being a somewhat torturous event tonight.
I, and I will share, I brought this up to Mr. Alameda. I don't think you might be saying that. I had thought potentially that if we were to seriously jumpstart a budget review committee, that those folks, and I'm willing to do it to the deep dive part, I did, I would say, medium deep dived. Not all the way deep dive, but I did identify issues that I would like to bring up, but I'm not attached to doing that tonight. However, Mr. Alameda also pointed out, and I hope you will jump in now, the, the issue around timing. So what would happen if this moved in relation to the next year's budget cycle?
Yeah, so I just wanna point out, obviously, the staff report is verbose. Midyear budget's really two things. It's kind of the state of the city. So a lot of it is just giving you an overview of where you're at on revenues and expenditure. The actual item, the action items that we're asking you to do are actually quite minimal. They're doing some account transfers interfund. And then they're covering some things councils already authorized to allocate money either from reserves or if there's a special source to fulfill those previous allocations accounts. So the actual actions we're asking the council to do are somewhat narrow in scope. I, I realize that the report is verbose, but that is all just showing you line item by line. And we're, we're looking at revenue wise, how things are going. So it's kind of like a midyear check-in.
I hear what you're saying.
But we're very soon into the budget process.
I hear you. So just to reply, I think that, I'm gonna speculate. Some of the questions that would be coming up would be things like where expenses went over and revenue went under. We wanna say, oh, how does that work? What is, what's happening there? So I agree, I hear what you're saying. You're asking, you're giving us this kind of a state of the situation, but I suspect it's going to flower into conversations like what I just brought up.
I, I would suggest we take the staff report. There's a lot of things that I, just looking at the raw data that prompt questions, I think they'll be answered. If you look at something, like, there's some things that we pay all in July for the full year. So yeah, so maybe eighty-nine percent, that might be alarming, but we aren't paying.
No, no, I get that part.
But I, I would suggest taking the staff report. I think a lot of the questions will be answered.
No, I hear what you're saying, except for just to be fair, if you looked at something like, here's a revenue to date that's different than last year, that, that prompts a reasonable question to say, oh, do we have confidence in what the end of year revenue is gonna be? I mean, that's totally fair, right? Anybody would ask that about a budget. So, but I was asking you more specifically, if we were to postpone it, what does that mean for our process going forward? Because I heard, if I heard you right, you were suggesting something like that busts us right up to working on the next budget.
Because in March, we'll be doing the annual budget at that point, in terms of staff.
But how, excuse me, how does that change? I mean, what do you need this in order to work on the annual budget? In other words, if you don't have this data or if you don't have it approved, does that, how does that affect starting to work on the annual budget? I know you're, you're kind of backed up against it, but I'm just curious.
My question back is, I think a lot of the questions that I've seen via email and one-off council member conversation, I think are very easily going to be answered in the presentation. Where at the conclusion of the presentation, I don't think there's gonna be an asterisk on the item. Can it be continued? Yes, but we'd have a lot of other items that will be taken up.
Okay, given, given your, I'm willing to drink some more coffee if, if that's what the council decides.
I will say, the next item on the general fund reserve policy, that's something that can, well, brief, can easily wait. It's something that we would like to have in place for next fiscal year, so it's incorporated in your budget document.
Understood.
But no impact in separate committee.
Yeah, no, thanks. I appreciate that.
And then, I don't know, to bring this up, because I had sent an email to, to Pam, and I'm gonna be meeting with her on Friday to go over, because I just think it's, you know, it's good to not address everything here and, you know, she's willing to meet with me to go over questions. So I don't know if we can wait to like, if my questions, I don't know, if other people or if I could, you know, here's the questions that I have or if they wanted to give them to me, you know what I mean? And keep, and so when we meet on Friday, I just think it would be nicer. I have, I have quite a few questions and I just think, I, I would like that, you know, to build a relationship with her, to do it in the comfort of her office, to go over it and then take it from there. So I don't know if we can move it to after, you know? We have that little meeting.
So you're, you're thinking that this is, for you, this is a little premature because you would prefer a different process of, yeah. I am at the council's disposal to figure out what you would like to do.
I do have a, a question, might be a little bit tangential, but I, I also had the same thought as Mayor Gilman, and that is that if we're gonna be looking at him in your budget, where is the budget committee, you know, participation? And so my question is, you know, where are we on forming like?
So we're at the promulgating, the opening stage, I understand that. Is that, is that fair, Mr. Montgomery, that we were going to announce opening, the, the citizen opening for that?
That's correct, Mayor. In the Friday's publishing of the Ojai Valley News, we'll have a, an add-out to the public for the community member vacancy. And the website will be updated.
And everything else is, I mean, all the other seats are already appointed and filled. We're just waiting on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, I have one question in regards to that as well. So I suggested someone, he came in, filled in his paperwork, and then you responded via email that, oh, how funny that we've had his paperwork for over a year. So does that not like give, you know what I mean, like?
It would still have to be interviewed.
Still have to be?
Of course.
Yeah, and.
And I know Leslie had a couple people and I don't know if the one, if they're the same people that.
Most likely. Because we know the same people. This is a small town. Most likely.
It's been a body that was not meeting, right? So, but we do wanna.
We have not talked about it. Nope. We're just looking across the, yep, could be. Who knows? Didn't talk about it. My question, just as far as the budget committee goes, is that didn't we, wasn't there something to the effect that the budget committee would only evaluate projects over $125,000, which did not include two fifty?
Can I weigh in on that? Because, well, I had a thought.
We, we had a motion though, so.
No, I hear that. It's that.
Sorry, two fifty. Thank you, Larry.
It was two fifty. I am, now, this is not something that we brought up and it's gonna be something to bring up, it seems to me, but my interest would be that that we have a budget review committee that is much more robust, that's meeting more frequently. Maybe it's quarterly or something to that effect.
So.
That, that, and there's a future item for next, for two weeks from now, but they would do something like review this midyear budget in detail.
Yes, I'm just, I just wanted to reiterate what we had made a motion and approved. That's all. I, I, once again, I am at the mercy of the council.
And I understood it just slightly differently. I would understand that the budget committee, you know, would look at the annual budget and would look at the midyear budget and then if, and. If an expenditure was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then it would potentially go to them to get the review, whether this is. And that's what I thought.
No, that, that's probably more accurate.
I have a question, I have a question just about tonight. Would it be possible for us to listen to the report and maybe not take any actions, but just receive the information and?
That's possible.
And just, a- again, this, there's really no new actions here, this is, the council has taken these actions leading up till now. They require additional allocation of funds, and this is fulfilling those obligations.
I, I hear you, I, it seems to me there's actually more here possibly than that, that, that's my feeling, which is okay, um. But I like the idea of hearing the presentation and, and potentially taking no action if that's what we think, I think that's, that's reasonable. Are you guys okay with that? Hearing the presentation?
I'm in favor of that.
Let's do it.
Likewise, likewise.
Take it away, chief. Thank you for letting us, uh, figure that out.
You're welcome. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tam.
Move the microphone closer probably to yourself and make sure it's on.
All right. Um, thank you for this opportunity to present the mid-year budget update. Before I present the numbers, I do wanna point out some, um. Typeles, uh, in the staff report. So. On page two of the staff report. The first, uh, table under local taxes, twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actual, it's not three million, it's thirteen million.
Yep.
So one, the number one is missing.
That's correct.
On page five, the header should be the first table, the header should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
Um, in both the proposed and the current. I probably went copy and paste happy. Um. It was, uh, page five, the top table. And then on page seven, same thing. The current budget is twenty-four, twenty-five. And I do wanna point out, under Measure C, the second paragraph. I overstated the twelve point, twelve point eight million, the estimate should be, uh, the current year should be fi- twelve point five million. So two hundred and ninety thousand got posted to January, so it's not part of the mid-year.
Thank you.
And then one more. Page nine. Total special fund expenditures. That should be forty-eight thousand five hundred, not fifty-eight thousand.
Right.
Uh, one more correction is in the account code, um, zero five two sixteen oh six, zero one four seven dash two hundred. Because this one is for the, uh, storm drain project at the plaza, so that's not the general contract service account.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that. Um, before I present the number, I would like to give a very brief overview of the annual budget and the proposed, why we do the proposed, uh, mid-year budget update. So our, our fiscal year began on July one and ends on June thirtieth of the following year. The budget should be adopted annually before the next fiscal year begins. And then the budget is normally adjusted throughout the year as the need, you know, comes along and. Um, usually it's because contracts increase or something like that. And during the, um, as far as the mid-year budget is concerned, it is just best practice for maintaining financial stability. And transparency. This is when we get a better understanding of, you know, um, council's priorities, what your objectives and priorities are, so that it will. Help us, uh, shape us in developing the, uh, next year's budget. So, um, during the mid-year budget, we do amend estimated revenues and, and expenditure to align with priorities. And the changing economic conditions. Um, as well as reports from external agencies, which is the primary sources of, um, our budget, uh, revenue budget. So. Thank you. Um, the key priorities when we were developing the proposed budget was fiscal stability, try, um, strengthening our infrastructure and increasing organizational. Efficiency. Um, next slide, please. So fiscal stability, that means to live within our means, we don't, uh, we don't wanna take out loans, we don't wanna take out bonds, and the city has been good at not doing that, which is very good. Living within our means, and that also means that we budget conservatively. That translate to not overestimating revenue, and if we get extra, great. More for the fund balance. Um, so the city has successfully, um, uh, meet the fifty percent reserve requirement target. Um, we've done that since, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, the most, um, part of the fiscal stability is focusing on reducing our, um, liabilities. And the most significant sub liability for the city is the unfunded pension and OPEP liability. Next slide, please. So, um, the unfunded liability, how do you get there? It's the difference between the forecasted, uh, liability, what the city would have to pay. And the assets that the city has in the investment account. Um, so with that, the city is currently paying the actuarially determined amount for pension in the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And about three hundred thousand towards OPEP, which is for the medical retirement. This, uh, medical retirement is funded by, um, the employee portion as well as the employer portion. And same thing with pension, it is not all funded by the city, the employee also has to contribute towards that as well. Um, the city also contributes an extra one hundred thousand dollars to pension and to OPEP. By doing that, what we're doing is reducing, uh, the, the timeline when the break-even point would meet, that means the, uh, liability. The projected liability and the asset will, you know, m- meet up and balance out. So, um, when we contribute the additional amount, it is taken into consideration and, um, so far, we've reduced that, um, timeline by two years. By contributing that extra hundred dollar. Um. To get to that break-even point a lot faster. Uh, total unfunded liability right now, um, as of the close of the recent fiscal year is four point seven million in, uh, pension. And three point five million in the OPEP liability. Uh, that takes us to two point eight million in total unfunded liabilities. So I do wanna mention that, that the original budget was a little bit understated, uh, because we don't get the actuary report until September, October sometimes, so. It comes in, you know, almost halfway through the year, and this is part of the reason why we do a budget adjustment. Uh, the second priority when we're, um, um, developing the budget is strengthening our infrastructure, so. Our city budget does dedicate, um, uh, resources to, um, fix our facilities, parks and drainage system. And street resurfacing as well. The, uh, street resurfacing, the fun, the major funding source is Measure C, and then the smaller amount of that comes from gas tax from the state. Next slide, please. Oh, wow, next slide.
Yeah, that's the one you just talked about.
Yes. All right, sorry.
No, not at all.
Um, okay, the third priority is increasing organizational efficiency. So the budget also includes, um, resources to invest in, um, new servers, uh, computers, um, and software upgrade. As well as, um, encouraging our employees to, uh, get involved with professional associations and attend professional conferences. So with this, um, I would like to, um, direct the audience as well as council to review the staff report, if you would like to have a detailed listing. Of the, um, prior approved, um, adjustment as well as the new, um, proposed adjustment. When I, uh, when I say prior approved, that is after the budget adoption, it's not during the budget adoption, so it's during this fiscal year. Um, that took place. Uh, with that, um, we can then talk about numbers. Uh, this presentation, can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. This presentation does not include tables that are included in the, uh, staff report, you can reference it, you can look at it again. So I don't wanna have to repeat that here. Um, this presentation will summarize the key figures and the main operating funds of our city. So the general fund is the main operating fund of our city, it pays for police services, street maintenance. Um, community services such as code enforcement and your staff. So, um, the question came, how, why did the revenue change? So. Um, for property tax, for example, we did do an estimate based on the initial, um, um. Forecast from the county of Ventura, they collect the taxes and then they actually send, um, the city notification of what they think should, will be collected. For our city. Um, when we were, uh, when I submitted this report, the county actually sent in, um, on January thirty-first, the revised. Um, amount that they expect to collect for the city of Ojai, and I was actually off by a hun- uh, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, so that was a nice surprise. Um, sales tax, so they did, they did show that there would be a reduction, that is why there is a, um, one, I'm sorry. I'm looking attach, at attachment A right now, that is why, um, the adjustment, the downward adjustment, it is based on what was received at, um, from the county of Ventura. Attachment. And for sales tax, uh, this information comes from HDL, they are our contracted, um, uh, professional, they do this for every city. And they work solely on sales tax. Um, I shouldn't, they also do, um, TOT and cannabis, so they provide an update as to what they think, um, will, um, what will affect our city. And how much, so that is the reason for the downward adjustment as well. Um, for the, um, property, uh, transit occupancy tax, there was an adjustment, an upward adjustment, and I'm very, I'm being very conservative here. If you look at the prior year projected number, we came in at six point, uh, six. Five nine million, so I'm only projecting six point seven, it's about a little bit over a hundred thousand, so I'm being very conservative. Um, it was a little bit under budget, but, um, or projected, that is why the increase. So every, every single line item, um, especially the taxes, comes from an external source where they actually give us a mid-year update as well. The license and permit area, we, uh, it is based on, um, the department and what they know will come in. Uh, the projects they have, um, in place. Uh, so that's just to answer the revenue, uh, question that you had earlier. Back to the, um, PowerPoint here. Total revenue for mid-year comes in at five point seven million, that's thirty-five point four percent in comparison to prior year at forty-one point one percent. Uh, the general, um, fund expenditure, we've, uh, utilized forty point two percent in comparison to prior year at thirty-five point four percent. The, um, I, I feel that the increased amount is normal because of the various inflations that we've experienced throughout this last fiscal year. And this year. So, um, and it, it's also because of the, um, because of that, there's been increases in, um, contracts, there's been, um. For example, the, uh. The, um, general plan update, there's a proposed, um, four hundred thousand dollar increase. And because of what is still needing to be done to get us to that point. Um, other increases includes the, um. Uh, technology improvement, um, safekeeping of our, um, data, as well as, there was another one. So, um. Getting back to, uh, this current year. We are operating at this moment or at the end of the, um, the mid-year point in a negative and in a deficit, only because we're comparing. Current year receipt to prior year receipt. Um, I, going back to the revenue, actually, um, the second half of our revenue actually comes in at the, um, the second half of the fiscal year. For example, the, uh, motor vehicle license fee, we don't get any of it in, at the first half. Um, the entire thing comes in, um, the second half in January and in May. And then also with TOT, the busiest season for us here is actually in the spring, so, um, that is part of the reason, uh, for the increase. Um, so staff is conservatively estimating that we will end the fiscal year in a positive position. And that is part of our, um, budgeting policies to be conservative, so as mentioned earlier, if we get more, great for our fund balance. Okay, next slide, please. So this, this next, um, slide shows, um, is Measure C, and it is the city's large, one of the city's largest fund. This revenue source is the five percent TOT increase that passed in March of twenty twenty. The, um, the implementation was delayed until June because of the uncertainty of COVID, we were right smack in the middle of COVID, but it passed. Just in time, so that was great. Um, the purpose of this fund is to, to support capital projects such as the street maintenance, parking lots, parks improvement, wildfire. Uh, prevention, water, uh, conservation and, um, other projects as directed by council. An example of that would be when we were adopting or, uh, developing the fiscal year budget, um, emission reduction was, um, one of the requests, and so we went back to the drawing board. And started to, uh, look into how much it would cost to be more, um, emission, uh, uh, climate-friendly type of, um. Projects. So next slide, please. Um, this is a summary of your Measure C. Uh, the first year, because it was delayed to, until June, um, which is the last day of the fiscal year, we only collected fifty thousand eight hundred dollars, and it. And again, it was during COVID, the next two, three years, we did collect more, but we didn't spend as much, and there's a good reason for that. We were in COVID and then we were coming out of COVID, and it was very hard to find contractors to do major work. So that was part of the reason why we didn't, um, utilize that funding, which means that we're building up the fund balance for Measure C. Now, at December of, uh, halfway through the year, we collected thirty-six point seven percent of the budget. Uh. Right? And, uh, year six, or no, year five, you can see that we spent two point seven million, that is mostly for street, um, resurfacing. So we're, we're using it. So we're, we're using it as intended, uh, by the, the special tax. Now, um, at December thirty-one, we have approximately seven point seven million in, in that account. Um, but don't get too happy because the budgeted projects that may not have been invoiced yet or have not started yet total seven point nine million. Okay, next slide please. This slide shows you the projects that were approved. Projects that were approved to be, uh, to use measure C funding. Uh, as you can see at the bottom, it shows seven point nine percent. And the pro- the project listed there, I do wanna make mention about the road overly and reconstruction nine point two million. Part of that nine point two is, um, consists of three point six million for the A T P project. And, um, that will be grant reimbursed. However, when with grant reimbursement, you have to spend the money first and then you request the reimbursement later. So measure C will be fronting this money. Uh, the next big item is facilities maintenance, um, totaling nine point five million. Within that nine point five is eight point nine eight million for the construction of the cabin village. We know that by the end of this fiscal year, the construction is not gonna be completed, so we will not be expending that, um, the entire nine point five million. Of that amount, only two hundred ninety-five thousand is supported by measure C, so that won't impact measure C. Just the road construction will be impacted by that temporarily. Next slide please. So almost towards the end. The next three slide is just a summary of all the special funds. The balance at the, uh, mid-year and then the estimated, uh, uh, ending balance. So measure C, currently, we, we have expended fifteen point one percent. And, uh, next slide please. So this is the continuation of the special funds. Um, total, um, mid-year point and estimated year-end amount. Currently, we are at seven point five percent, but if you m- back out the cabin village, um, expense, that moves us up to about fif- uh, nine point seven percent. Almost said million, nine point seven percent. Next slide please. This slide shows you the enterprise fund. It's, uh, the transit fund and the cemetery fund is considered the, uh, enterprise fund because it's a fee-for-service type of fund. Um, we have expended twenty-two point four percent, uh, and, uh, in comparison to last year, which was at twenty-five point one percent at the mid-year point. All fund total estimate is now, um, at about seventeen point five percent. But if you back out the cabin village project, then it, uh, moves up to about twenty point eight percent. Still way below the fifty percent mark. And with that, that concludes my.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Mr. Steingold, let me ask if you guys, if you guys wanna please talk outside just 'cause you have a voice that carries, man, you know, you carry weight. Thank you. I mean, I, thank you for that, that's really good. I had a couple of questions here and there, but I don't have any question about our health in the end. I have zero question about that. It's more like I have particular questions on most pages here and there to ask. But, um, I don't need to ask those right now, so I wanna go to the council and ask what, where, where are you at? How are you feeling? Thank you for that presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much. I actually generally feel good about where we are. Um, and, uh, and I, I know we talked about we're just not taking any action on this, but I think we could all, I don't have any specific questions.
Yeah, no, I'm feeling, I'm not worried.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. So if we don't take action tonight, um, this isn't like, uh, Congress failing to approve a debt ceiling and the, the government's not gonna shut down, right? I mean, this, this is like a best practice to do this review. And what I, what I'm sensing is that nobody's overly concerned about the overall health. We have a lot of discussion to take place about our path forward in budget. Um, but there are like micro questions, you know, how did this happen? Why did this happen? And, you know, that, that, you know, and I think for a lot of that stuff, we really, it would really be optimal for Mr. Harvey to be here. Because there, it's a combination. Um, but I, I do, so I have only one question. You gave us attachment B, um, which are the statement of financial principles. When was that adopted? What year? Cause I think we didn't do that in our past two years, so.
So that is actually part of the budget document. And it's annually, yeah, it's, it's, uh, page eleven.
So, so when was the last time the five-page, uh, statement of financial principles has been changed or altered or, I mean, I'm, I'm curious as to how far back these principles go.
Way before my time.
So, so these have been in place like at least ten years or?
I believe so, and, and, uh, the only thing that I do update is on page fifteen, which is the reserve policy. Because if we change our mind of whether we, you know, say it fifty, eighty or a hundred percent, then I update that number. But everything else is just general. Principles of accounting and how we should do business.
My final comment is that when I was first elected two years ago and I asked around about our financial situation, um, I was told that we were very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
That's, and that's the last.
Yeah, great. I, uh, mine are, I just have a couple tiny, on page four, page, I'm looking at four, four. There, there's a couple little tiny things that I think could be answered sort of quickly. The table is general fund revenues, proposed adjustments. And I see the budget use of fund balance and I see four forty. So there's the, tell me about, what's, tell, explain that adjustment there.
Okay, the four hundred thousand is from the, for the general plan update expense. And, um, uh, current revenue doesn't cover that, so we would have to use fund balance, a reserve. And then the forty dollar, uh, forty thousand dollars is for the, um, I T contract. Because at, at the current point, uh, the mid-year point, we're, we're operating, um, in a deficit right now.
Yeah, and I mean, I think in general, we don't have to go through each thing, but we can see, like, for example, if we were to look at, um, page four, four again, and, and you just see contract services and it has our estimated actual is substantially more. But tho- those aren't quest- those aren't accounting questions, it seems to me, those in part possibly, but they're also priority questions that the council has directed. And we've done things that I think we, this is the kind of conversation that's gonna take some time, that it's not wrote. And not to say that they shouldn't be paid or anything like that, but more like, oh, we did this and this is what it's costing. And is this what we are intending to do or wanting? So that's the longer piece that doesn't require you exactly. It's more like, what did we do? So I think the accounting is clear, it's the consequence of decisions.
If I could.
Yes.
Jump in. So at the thousand-foot level, what you really want to focus on, so general fund, special fund, we, we've gone through that. Really, the general fund adjustments, they boil down to looking at page six to ten. You're making adjustments to your general fund operating revenues of one point one, two million dollars and change. You're making adjustments to general fund expenditures to cover the things that the council has already taken up, approved, considered of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. So your revenue expenditures more than offset your expenditures. So you're more than balanced, you're better than balanced, and you're actually returning two hundred and thirty-three thousand back to the general fund reserve. The general fund side, that's a good story, that's a good picture. On the special fund side, you see there's some very small incremental changes to fund balance. The only significant ones are, um, adding the money for the street resurfacing program. And those are all special funds, they're self-balancing funds that you have revenues and expenditures in those balance.
No, again, I'm, the, the bottom line is totally fine. It would just, it would be something, again, like on page four, four, where you would say other expenditures are four hundred, uh, almost four hundred over. And that would just be, you would have the conversation to say what's the cause.
A great conversation to have in the development of the annual budget and when you have your committee. Cause that's forward-looking on what we're going to do. My concern is if we hold this back, it does impact the development of the budget. Because we wanna have a fresh restart of our adjusted budget of what we've done and what we know to be as we develop next year's budget, so we're starting.
I don't know if this approach would work, but, um, I think there's some hesitancy to, you know, to put a rubber stamp on a whole bunch of stuff. If there are very specific things that you need us to do, like we need to move this money from this, are you able to like identify that or are there too many for us to address or?
Well, yeah, everything's identified in the report. I was just giving the big picture when you, everything summed together, what the net effect is.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, oftentimes we get, uh, you know, a request at, in our staff report, you know, so it says adopt adjustments. I mean, are there, you, you want us to adopt each and every adjustment is basically what you're saying.
Correct, and when this says adjustments, these are things that on either a policy or a contract level that the council has already approved and we re-engaged in. This is making the adjustments to the budget document to reflect either those revenue increases or those expenditure increases. So that when we go into the development of our annual budget for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, which we're going to be doing probably in March, that we have an accurate picture to start with. This, it gets cha- challenging from a development standpoint to hold this.
I, I understand, and I think, you know, you're, you're getting a little bit of pushback from us, and I don't wanna speak for the other council members, but for some of the adjustments, we wanna know what happened here. Why are we doing this, what, you know, and go into some type of detailed discussion and, and you're saying, uh, you know, do it now and you can talk about it later.
Uh, we're more than happy to answer any specific, the, the information's here, so I'm more than happy to answer any of them.
If I might add, so even if I'm, ob- obviously, we're gonna say, oh, pay the bills and move the money where you need to move it. Like, that's part, it's clear. It's more like saying, I think what Mr. Whitman was suggesting is, it would be interesting for us to have the conversation about what changes are in the budget. And it doesn't, I, I'm trying to understand, when you say you're gonna work on next year's budget, that if, if we say we wanna have conversations around these things, what it might entail actually is that we say, wow, we didn't pay attention to this item correctly, or we would like to make an adjustment there. We won't be able to do that right now, but I don't think you need that right. But I, I, I guess the pushback, pushback is kind of a funny expression, but I was saying that it isn't, it isn't that there's a lack of confidence. It's more like taking full responsibility for the changes and asking, we wanna analyze those, it seems to me, as a body, so that we can make adjustments for ourselves going forward and what we're asking.
Yeah, and so my overview, I was just trying to sum it up in the most simplest terms, but there's no additional information that if we continue this that will be coming forth. It's answering the questions on these specific items that staffs.
I get that.
And I, I'm more than happy to do that.
Can I ask a quick question? I, I heard you say that every adjustment is something that the council has approved. Did I hear that correctly?
With the exception of revenues, cause those are.
With the exception of revenues, right, so, and, and revenues, I think Ms. Greer explained, you know, how revenues sort of ebb and flow based on certain criteria around municipal, you know, um, but you're saying that, that all adjustments that are in here, we've approved.
Well, you'd be approving them tonight, I'm saying the underlying.
Oh, we would be approving them now.
Expenditures.
Yeah.
Where we need to make adjustments.
Okay.
Most of those are tied to either policy or contractual items that the councils adopted for the most part. And I say for the most part, cause there's some smaller ones that just ran over, cause they ran over. And we need to make an adjustment.
Okay, so le- I'm just gonna repeat so that I'm, I'm clear. What you're saying is, is that these adjustments are tied to things that the council has approved or a policy that the council, an expenditure the council has approved, i.e. like the general plan, or a policy that the council has approved, um, understanding that there would be some financial ramifications to that, except for a small number of things that are just the cost of doing business and, you know, who could see it and it's not really anything to stop us, so that's what I'm understanding. Okay, thank you.
Well, can I fill in one thing? It's, this is what, cause I, I do this all the time, I go, oh, um, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Summers, would you guys investigate X, Y, and Z? They don't say, sure, here's the, here's the preliminary estimate of the cost. We're not, that's not the system.
No, yeah, and I understand that completely, is that, that, um, absolutely, I understand that. Um, and, and so that, that is something, a process that we need to look at. Or when someone says, sure, I can do that. Uh, okay, I'm sure you can, but how much is it gonna cost us?
Right.
How you can do it?
Cause that's part of the conversation.
Suggestion, I had a.
Yeah.
Uh, assuming that a meeting, eh, are regularly scheduled, not next meeting, but the one after that, thirty days. All of us have the opportunity to speak with staff, get our individual explanations, uh, come back in having received the staff report. Very brief discussion about what it is. I, you know, have an understanding, um, that that's something that Ms. Mang would really like to see.
Absolutely.
Happen.
I favor that.
Does that? Carl, do, am I screwing you up by making that?
Yes, sir, before we move any farther forward, let's fulfill our duty for public comment for this item. And I will tell you that there's no more Zoom participants. Um, and we just have Mr. Miley.
Fans fancy that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Montgomery, that's helpful.
Hello.
Hey.
Okay, mid-year budget review. It's good to view the adopted budget, you see, the adopted budget is within reasonable range of estimated revenue. I do have a question though. Has to do with the capital improvement budget. Uh, seventeen million dollars, did I get that right? And, uh, it received six million dollars in transfer from measure C. But then there was a comment and said, or my question is, how does this result in not having enough money for the current capital improvement project plans? I looked, but I couldn't find it. Then I just found something else now. Under Special Fund Revenues on page seven of ten. It says that the budget is seventeen million dollars, Capital Project Fund. But the revenue so far, as of the end of December, are six hundred and thirty-three thousand. That's like fourteen, sixteen million, three hundred thousand less. I don't understand why we're not getting more capital improvement funds into the revenue side. Am I making myself clear?
I, I'm not following you.
Okay. On page seven of ten, there's a Special Fund Revenue Chart.
Yes, I see that, okay.
And down about halfway, it says Capital Program Funds Budget is seventeen million.
Yep.
The next column is Revenues, as of December thirty-first. It says they've collected six hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is sixteen million, three hundred thousand short. How can you fill that bucket up if we only have six hundred thousand dollars so far?
I'm, so I was with you, and then when you, so on page, I'm, when you say page seven of ten to start, and then you go, then I show the next page, Capital Improvement Project Fund, seventeen point eight million. And then you say the revenue number was what?
Six thirty-three.
Oh, go ahead.
Address the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I totally understand what Mr. Miley was asking about.
Thanks.
So seven of ten, the, the CIP Fund is a somewhat unique fund. It, it has really no, for lack of a better term, income source. It's a way that you track capital projects across the city. So the CIP Fund, which we have the five-year CIP, is where you house and all your capital projects live. All those capital projects, they're, they're somewhat, um, unique, because they have, may have six funding sources. A street project may have gas tax, it may have, uh, allocation property tax. So what you do is you track your expenditures in the CIP. And then usually, sometimes you do it twice a year, once a year. You make the transfers in from all the underlying funds that are supporting that at year-end. So it's not, it's not uncommon to even go sixty percent of the year and maybe have ten percent, but at the end of the year, you'll be made whole when those transfers in from your underlying revenue sources, if it's Measure C, gas tax, sales tax, property tax, come in to make the, um, capital projects fund.
Thank you.
So by the end of the year, there will be seventeen million dollars in revenues from the six funds?
There will be revenues matching the expenditures, there are projects that are likely to continue over into next fiscal year, or may not occur.
So there's no worr, there's no worry here?
N-no.
As a current financial director.
Think you should put up a donation page.
I think our
I think he's got.
I think our financial director was ready to comment on that topic.
Yes, so the six hundred and thirty-three thousand that you see there really is the transfer in for projects that qualify under Measure C, that can be reimbursed. So when, as Carl was saying, that when we work on a project, and if it qualifies under, you know, what was previously approved, then the, um, uh, finance will do the transfer based on the invoice that was paid.
Gotcha. Thank you.
When, when we work on road paving, then there will be more.
So we're back to the question, Mr. Alameda, that, uh, Mr. Whitman was proposing. What would that mean to your process if we were to take thirty days, so not the next council meeting, but the one after that, and we've come to staff with our particular questions, and then approve it, is that going to make your life terrible?
Won't make my life terrible.
Okay, good.
Won't cease operations.
Yeah. I mean, is that acceptable?
Yeah, just, um, if there are questions, obviously, I'm, I'm more than happy, and I think we have the ability to answer any of them, in the spirit of if we're able to adopt this tonight, but if we need more time, we need more time.
I'm hearing we want more time.
I don't know that we'll have more information in thirty days on the staff side.
There will be some from me, um, it would be specific questions, like, let's say, around, when I look at the contractor, the legal things that we're not going, we don't have to talk about them in detail, but I'll say, oh, what, what were, that'll be related to the legal detail piece? So we would say, oh, this is what these individual pieces cost. It's just, not to say, it's, again, not that it shouldn't be paid, it's that, it's very useful to me to say, oh, this initiative costs this, you know, that's great to know.
Why is this item this much more than what had been budgeted for?
That's, that's, yeah, exactly. So that's, I'm, I'm asking, I'm suggesting that what I'm hearing is we would like some more time.
And I think the opportunity to speak to staff, um, to Councilmember Mang's point, to, you know, start to understand and, um, you know, build relationships and be able to ask questions
Absolutely.
is really, really important. Um, and, and I think it would be, uh, sort of cart before the horse if we were to go ahead, and sort of approve this now, but to the mayor's point, we don't generally want to make your life any more difficult than, you know, then, it's not difficult, but we don't want to make it any more difficult, um, or any less easy, let's say that, so.
Understood, and last year, this is the first time the city took up this, this process, so.
Yeah, no, I know, right?
There's some learning on, on both sides.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for this, do we, uh, to bring it back? Uh, no?
I don't know, do we need a motion? We want to say that we want to table this until thirty days from now?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table this and bring it back thirty days from now. Or at the next, at the, at the second March meeting.
Second. Okay? Roll call? Yes, please.
All right. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lane.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule. Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for being flexible, guys.
Thank you, appreciate your time and all of that, thank you.
I hope what it means is that we're going to be, um, more prudent, fiscally responsible people.
And, and better understand
And better understanding.
how, how things, how, how budgets are
Yeah.
you know, coming in or not coming in, uh, it's really important.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
And it's important for next year's budget as well.
Yeah, for sure.
And we heard you, you're agreeing that our next item can wait until next time?
Yeah, there's really no
Yes.
timeline or pressing on that.
Thank you for that. All right, so, um, that's, that's it, then. Any councilmember reports that we need to have?
Uh, I'm going to make one. I did not attend this function in my official capacity, but I did attend kind of an organizational event for the Miners Oaks, um, park.
Hmm, great.
And it was, you know, it was great, they, they had a, um, a lot of information there about, you know, what their plans are, and, uh, they talked a lot about, you know, their budgeting. And it's just something that everybody should keep their eye on, and if they're interested, I'm sure they'd love to hear from me.
There's a volunteer signup page on their web, they have a page on Facebook.
That's great.
I saw that, yeah, pretty sweet.
Thank you, that's good. Anything else? Um, City Manager Report?
None.
And then I want to suggest future agenda items we will bring up actually at our next meeting, if that's okay with you all? Well, I, I, I was actually going on, that Mr. Harvey's suggestion, I have twenty-five things I'm ready to bring up, and his suggestion was, why don't we do it all together, when we're all together for our goal-setting meeting, so then, I guess I'm imagining that we will, whatever that process is going to be, we will fill, distill it down to the topmost, but there will be a long sort of parking lot of things that we know we want to get to. So, um, if, you're certainly allowed to bring up a future agenda item, of course?
Yeah, so we have brought this up, and I think that it has been passed, but, um, I am hearing from the, let's, uh, let's transition from fireworks to drones, and there is a hard timeline on that, which is July. And so, um, I, I'm pretty sure we, we had an agenda item for that, and I'm pretty sure we voted for, for, to move that forward. Um, I would like to know what the process might be to actually get that on an agenda sooner rather than later, because that kind of planning, that kind of outreach, and it's time-sensitive, and we did, I have promised constituents, I think we had, we had two votes, and three votes traditionally has got you a date certain that the group decided on.
I can, I can answer one thing, it definitely to talk about next time. And I did reach out to the group that's behind it, and it is possible, their timeline is moving. Apparently, some action has already happened on the former situation, so we'll get a full report out next time, but it's possible if you, you'll see some transition. It might not be that it fully manifests this year, but it, the thing's in place for the following year, but that's what they're suggesting, so full report out next time.
Okay, so the people who contacted me, um, who said, you know, is this going to be an agenda item? Um, I tell them that, uh, you guys have already decided to do a transitional event?
Well, don't, I, I can't, not authorized to say that, but what I am saying is that we will get a nice report when we come up with our goal-setting in two weeks. That's all I can say, what else can I?
I don't know, we could say we could put it on the agenda. I mean, that, that's kind of what I'm saying, is like, we said we were, this was a very long time ago, it's a one-off. It's not a difficult thing, um, you know, we can, you know, that, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying it's been floating around for a long time. It doesn't have that many ramifications, I think that everyone thinks it's probably a pretty good idea, so that's what I'm saying, I'm saying it's an easy one-off, and it's been floating around for a long time, and I was contacted to see if I could move it forward. So there we are.
I think what the mayor's saying is that, unique to every other meeting we've ever had, our next one, everybody's going to have the opportunity to put things into the chute and talk about the priorities for when we're going to.
I understand that, but we've already approved it, we had three votes, it's always been a date certain for three votes, putting it into the hopper, and, you know, next week, and then it's two weeks after that. I'm just saying, we're not going to make a date certain, I committed to it, and so, um, I'm trying to see if there is, uh, sort of a special category that this could go in, is time-sensitive, and not one of the thirty things on the list. And if, I mean, we voted, we had three votes, date certain, that's been the policy.
I hear you, so then, what I would suggest is that let's keep that in mind, and then when we come back in two weeks, move that into the higher one with the time sensitivity, and I, I think we're talking to the same people, and they're the ones who are also saying to me, yes, it might be that it doesn't happen this year, that it's next year, but that, we can talk about that then. So we will bring it up in two weeks?
Yeah, I, but two weeks, we're having our goal-setting session, right?
It's one of the goal, it will be one of our goals.
To have a drone show. That's going to be one of our five top goals.
And then you
I'm sorry if I'm not being clear.
You're not.
Okay, well, let me, let me try.
I told you, after ten o'clock.
Okay, well, then, then don't be mad at me for not being clear.
I'm not, I'm not mad at you, I'm just saying, I, I'm not sure you're hearing what I'm saying.
I think I am. That there is, there's going to be twenty-five things that we're going to bring up in two weeks, I presume, between the all of us. And what we can do is say, obviously, there's going to be five or six that are going to be long, with long arcs, they're not one-offs, they're a big thing, like fire hardening or whatever, or getting ready for the next fire. There's going to be many that don't fit into one of those categories, but they are items, and this could be one of those, so it's not our top six big arc, but it's one that has time-sensitive, that we will say, this one needs to go on the next agenda that we talked about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I have one question. Um, could I get, like, a copy of last year's goals? Because I'm just curious, like, of that list, how many of those goals have been?
There's like a photograph.
They, they started it, but didn't finish it.
Oh, wait, actually, Ben, Ben, uh,
I would like to
dotocracy, and I'll, I'll see if I can.
Yeah, I would just like to see that, just, maybe there's something we can.
There's a photograph of it somewhere.
That, that, that's, that's where it ended. They, they didn't finish the exercise.
But Ben broke it down and worked it all out.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to see that.
Yeah.
We can ask Ben to see if he has
Yes, I would, I think it would be important, you know what I mean? So instead, we can, maybe there's things on there that we can carry on and get accomplished.
Well, there's certainly going to be some of those, no question about it.
Perfect.
Well, we're going to have to do something.
So maybe our list can become twenty or fifteen, not twenty-five.
Uh, maybe so.
And I'm wondering if all of the things that we have voted and approved and then not done, where all those live? You know, I mean, there have been quite a few that we have said next agenda items, and
So this would be a great goal-setting
Yeah.
conversation for things that you, you feel that you've brought up, haven't been addressed. Bring, bring them all to the table so that you can make the decision at the next meeting.
And Leslie, if it makes you feel better, I have that spreadsheet, because I'm a little OCD with certain things, so like, tonight, this will go.
Yeah, and I think process, you know, we, we, it goes to the agenda, we approve it, and it goes into sort of an abyss sometimes, unless we're constantly on it, and maybe that's on us. Maybe there's a way to parking lot it so that it comes back up, anyway, thank you.
Perfect.
There are some ways we could do that with our agenda, we can have, that parking lot could be part of the end of the agenda, so we never lose sight of it.
I would encourage you to talk about this next time.
Next time. Meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you.